Hi. Welcome. Hi. This is the continuation of the planning board's hearings relative to the Hingham Public Schools' application for site plan review related to the high school athletic fields project at 17 Union Street. It's 7:05. Tonight, our hearing will be held in two parts. In the first half, we'll look at the use of policy for the fields, for the proposed multipurpose field, along with its lights and amplification system, and after that, we will turn to traffic and parking on the site. Before we begin, I have a few things I wanted to talk about, and I hope you'll bear with me. The first is some communications that have occurred since our last hearing on December 10th, was it?
Seventeenth.
What time?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, sorry. And then, I'd like to give you an overview of where we are in this process. After our last hearing, the school committee voted to retain its own attorneys for purposes of this site plan review. Attorneys Tachio and Morgan asked to meet with the town's real estate council, Susan Murphy, who has been advising the town on this Dover amendment-protected site plan review, to review the governing statutes and the regulations. They agreed to meet on Christmas Eve, and I was out of town, so Paul Healy met with them, as well as Carol Falvey, the member of the school committee. The planning board has also received letters and emails offering a full range of perspectives on this project from a number of citizens, and I'm going to read the names, just in case you sent something in and you're not noted. Gerald Jones, Janet and Jim Plotner, Benjamin Burnham, Susan Boyd, Fred Hussey, Peter and Julie McGoldrick, Sue Letizia Eddy, and Chris Ward. Thank you all very much, and I know I speak for my colleagues in thanking you and in sharing you that we read these very carefully and consider every notion submitted. So where are we in this process? After tonight, we should have most of the information that we need to make a decision on site plan review, and specifically on the condition of the site plan review. I'm hopeful that, except for the drainage plan, which is not in the category of all the information that we need, we will be able to deliberate at our next meeting and vote on conditions to the site plan review, except again, the drainage plan. The drainage plan is currently under revision and is slated to be reviewed by the Conservation Commission towards the end of this month and possibly into February. So, as a planning board, we may be able, and this is, you know, depends on how we do tonight and how my colleagues feel about each of the conditions that we consider. As a planning board, we may be able to vote on every other condition and make our decision, make our site, and deliver a site plan review conditioned upon the applicant returning to us with the CONCOM decision, and then, we would revisit the aspects of the site that would be affected by that decision. So, for example, if the CONCOM said, "You can't put that parking this close to this point," and you had to move it and reshape it, then we would come back and maybe look at if you changed the number of parking spaces or the traffic flow or something like that, and we would have to revisit anything that was affected by the Conservation Commission's decision. So, that's what I think we can do after tonight. We are hoping that the school committee will request an extension until at least January 15th, so that between tonight and our next meeting, we as a board can absorb what we've learned. This is, I think, a quarter of the pile of paper that I have related to this project. So there's just a lot of information to absorb, and we all have to, you know, think about what, what conditions we would think would be desirable for this site plan review. So we're hoping to get a continuation until at least the 15th, so that we can think about the conditions, submit them as individuals to Mary and Karen, for them to put them together, so that our next meeting will be really organized, and we can go through them and do what I said about getting everything but drainage done. So, with that, right on cue, a letter from Gail Engineering requesting an extension until January 15th. Thank you very much. So that's our plan, unless somebody on this board strenuously objects. So, the first part of tonight's conversation about use policy, I believe, goes to the heart of the matter of what most people are here to talk about, and there is passionate perspectives on all sides. So I just wanted to say a couple of things about that before we get started. Our planning board's five members are elected by the same group of people who elect the school committee's seven members. So there's 12 elected people who are involved in putting this plan forward and in doing site plan review, and all 12 are elected by the same people. I truly believe that these voters, you know, are interested and are working together to come up with the best outcome for the whole town. Today's, you know, six-year-old Hingham Youth Football player is tomorrow's 77-year-old person who wants to have a quiet night at home on a Friday night. And so, we are really here to represent everyone, and I'm just saying that because it kind of goes without saying, but I think it's just a nice reminder to everyone that we tend to sort of represent our interests that are most at hand today, but I urge everyone to consider, everyone in Hingham, in your comments tonight. Yes, this site plan review is conducted under the Dover Amendment, which gives the applicant unusual leeway in the use of this property. But we know that this applicant, the school committee, shares our interest in establishing reasonable conditions that will allow for the education of our children while respecting the lives of the abutters. This is the kind of sticking point that I want to avoid, so I'm going to tell you what it is, and then we'll see how well we do at avoiding it. The Dover Amendment talks about educational uses. After reviewing case law, I think we all agree that high school athletics is an educational use, and for-profit camps are not. But what about youth sports? In Hingham, these are not run by the school committee, so if we look at the Regis College case, we might decide that they are not an educational use. But if we see youth as students of the Hingham Public Schools, then we may decide that they are an educational use. At some point, the planning board may have to decide on a definition, but I'm proposing to my board members that we put that off for now. And, well, so, without more talk about that, what I'd like to do is have the school committee give us their presentation on the use policy, and we can consider the merits of that use policy, of that, of the details of that policy, but also consider some of the alternative suggestions that we have received by email, brought forth by residents, and some of the other, what some of the other towns actually do about these times and days of use. I do this with total appreciation for the countless hours probably that the ad hoc committee has already spent on this, and we don't want to undermine the school committee's expertise in educating the children of this town. But the introduction of lights and sound onto this field have brought education and land use wholly together in one place, and that's where we are. I'm confident that we can reach reasonable conditions, and we will not have to go back to deciding on definitions that pit one group against another. So, does the planning board have any questions? Comments? No. So...
Thanks, Judy. Jeff Tachio, Jason Morgan, my partner, we're here. Carol Falvey, chairperson of the school committee. Doc Gallow's here. Bill Seymour, his team from Gail. And this is the first meeting that we have attended, following up on what you talked about the confluence of land use and educational policy. As you know, I do a lot of land use, so the intent is that we can get up to speed and get a lot of those various land aspects together with you folks. Tonight, we have, is Carol's going to go through the suggested use policy and go through, she's got a PowerPoint presentation to go through, and she can answer some questions on that. This was submitted, I believe, last week, so I know that you folks have at least what was the draft as of then. I think this is actually the same thing. Also, Bill's brought in, and he's got some boards, and he can answer some questions. There have been various questions about stands and whatnot, some of the traffic, those safe parking issues, so he can also be available. I know that presentations have been made. Jeff Durk has actually had his comments, although Jeff can't be here tonight, but there are other, some lingering questions and follow-up questions, so hopefully, we can know where those go. School committee members are here, and I think with that, Carol's going to go through the presentation if that's appropriate now.
Okay. I have some copies here for people. Probably in the back, if you can't see, so... Thank you. Thank you. A lot of work has gone into this. So, we're going to talk about, and I think, Judy, as you said, the main concern is the multipurpose field, usage policy. So I'm going to talk a little bit about what we have today, who uses the fields that we have today. We'll talk a little bit about ad hoc, because they did put a lot of time and effort and, you know, listened to a lot of input from a variety of sources, and then, I'll end up with the usage policy.
Excuse me?
Can you see?
We can't hear you, Carol.
Oh, thank you. Do you guys see the lights down? How can you? Okay.
We can't hear you, Carol.
Thanks. Okay. So I've got a small technical problem in that I don't have a clicker, so I have to push the button, so bear with me, and I'll try to speak loudly. He said it's not, it's only recording. The microphone is only recording?
It's live.
It's live now? Okay. Is this better? Okay, good. That's all right. I'll get it. So, who is using the fields today? I think it's important to note, we do have a very vibrant and deep group of high school users. We run freshman JV and varsity teams for most of our sports. Those sports that use the multipurpose field will be field hockey, soccer, football, lacrosse. Baseball has its own field, as you know, softball. The tennis courts are located adjacent to the multipurpose field. And then, physical education classes will be using the multipurpose field. Non-high school users include Hingham Youth Football, and these people have been using our fields for years. Hingham Youth Soccer, youth lacrosse, girls softball, Hingham Hall Babe Ruth, again, not on the multipurpose fields, on their appropriate fields, Hingham Adult Softball, and the Galway Rovers. The Rovers are, it's a, it's a group that has a lot of Hingham kids on it. The process, so everybody is aware, for renting our fields and our building, is that you fill out a form. It's managed by a central manager here, not in this building, but down at the depot. Her name's Barbara Pie. She reports up to Paul Fields, who reports up to John Ferris, and a form is filled out. It is sent to the building principal to coordinate as far as the number of users at that point, and then, she also receives payments for the users. Typical seasons for the high school, our fields are used for high school sports late August, usually last week in August, and they run through, for most sports, the first week in November. Thanksgiving, as you all know, most of us attend the Thanksgiving game. It's usually just practices for the majority of Thanksgiving for football. The youth sports typically start in September, and they run through October 31st. So they, it's a, you know, about a 14-week season. Spring season, for the high school sports, it's third Monday in March we start our season, and we end early June. Total games, you know, 18 to 20 games, nine to 10 home. I'm sorry, I didn't go through that with the fall sports. And I think that's important, so I'm going to go back. So, field hockey has, and field hockey, lacrosse, and, well, field hockey, soccer, have 18 to 20 games, nine to 10 of those are home. I think most important to point out is football has less games, 10 to 11 total games, five to six of those are home. Moving to spring, again, our season starts in early Ju, ends in early June, 18 to 20 games, nine to 10 of those are home. Hingham Youth Sports start in late March, except for soccer, which starts in early April, and it goes through the second week of June. Their games are mostly on Saturdays and Sundays. So, total usage today, again, 14 weeks in the fall, 12 weeks in the spring. We do have some summer camps that take place at the high school. Football camp this year, the Red Sox had a baseball camp. We do have firebolts also that uses the track, but again, the track is not located adjacent to the, to the new multipurpose field. There is a current variance that was established on Michelson Field. It's the current football field. It states that will not be utilized for athletic contests or other events on Sundays before 12 noon, until the sun starts setting, and they need to get their games in a little bit earlier. So, that time in October, they can start at 11:30, and then, 11 o'clock in November. There is also a variance in regard to music, and first, Hingham Youth Football may play the National Anthem before each contest. And there is halftime music played as part of choreography, made surely in routine. And music is, pump-up music, for those of you who know what that is, is not allowed. And Hingham Youth Football is encouraged to work with neighbors concerning the appropriate levels allowed. So that was established by zoning back in 2008. So let's talk a little bit about ad hoc. Ad hoc is made up of eight people in total, two high school neighbors, three other residents, and right here, I'd like to clarify something that I know there's been a little chatter about, and that is, one of the residents of the Meadows is truly just a resident of the Meadows, she's not a representative of the Meadows, and two parents of student athletes, and then, one long-range planning member, our school committee, who is Ed Schreier. We have also ex officio members. We have the town engineer, Roger Fernandez, who we really appreciate all the time and effort he's put into this project, as well as Margaret Conady, our athletic director, and then, central office representatives, who are usually Dr. Gallow or Ms. John Ferris. We asked for members of this committee through cable TV, our website, we placed an ad in the Hingham Journal, and we actively reached out to people who expressed an interest in it, in this committee. This committee has worked really hard. It was not an easy committee to participate in. They held 25 meetings over 18 months, and I, as a town, we truly owe them a debt of gratitude for all the work they've done. Their charge was to continue the work of the 2000 ad hoc field study committee with the following focus, and that was to work with administration, coaches, long-range planning, to implement Phase One. Phase One was the track and the tennis courts, which we completed on time and under budget, and to develop the designs for Phase Two, as well as complete a traffic study, which we're going to talk about a little bit later. The committee facilitated community input and neighborhood dialogue about the nature of Phase Two. It was in their charge. I feel they did that with the best intentions. So, that was their charge. They held 25 meetings. They heard from many specialists, lighting specialists, turf, parking, traffic, and sound specialists. You've, I look around this room, and I know a lot of you were there, listening to them also, so they did their research. They received comments from doctors, coaches, neighbors, officials, and parents, and they listened. They had three votes. The first one was probably their most difficult vote, and that was on the location of the multipurpose field. They looked at six locations in total, and it was six to one to place it where the recommended site is today. Before they sat as a large group to talk about the recommendation, a subcommittee comprised of Margaret, Tim, and Wallace sat down to sort of discuss what they each saw and would want. John Ferris, the central office representative, provided guidelines and research on usage policies. This group then brought their thoughts and concerns. They made no decisions. It was sort of to help form the source of discussion for the larger group. And, and it was well thought out, it was a difficult discussion, but I think in the end, they listened to everybody involved and came up with the following recommendation. The recommendation that they made to school committee, the school committee's policy subcommittee, was that the fields start Monday through Friday times 9:00 a.m., 8:00 a.m. on Saturdays, and then, with the variance, on Sundays. Lights out, so now, we're just talking lights, and it does get complicated, there's many layers to this policy. Eight, at 8:30 Monday through Thursday, 10:00 on Fridays, and 9:00 on Saturdays, and 5:00 on Sundays. Now, there's not many Sundays you'd need lights, but when you get into the fall, you might need some lights on Sunday. And then, PA system, two nights a week, Monday through Thursday until 7:30, Friday until 10, and Saturday until 8. So they made that recommendation to the school committee's policy committee. Policy discussed it, suggested some changes, and brought it to school committee. School committee put, wrapped some more language around that, but pretty much stuck to the spirit of the ad hoc committee recommendation. So, again, the hours for the field to be in use would be from our policy, 7:30 to 8:30 Monday through Thursday, with games not to start until 9:00 a.m. The reason for that is, we do have early morning physical education classes, so we would want to be able to allow the people out on the field earlier, if need be. Friday, 7:30 a.m., again, for physical education classes, to 10:00 p.m., with games not to start until 9:00 a.m. And then, Saturday, 7:30 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., with games not to start till 8:00 a.m. And then, Sunday, again, with the variance. September, the games would start at 12, run until 5, 11:30 to 5. Games in November, starting at 11 to 5. Our recommendations aligned pretty much with ad hoc on this. Then, the light usage for the fields, Monday through Thursday until 8:30 p.m., Friday until 10, Saturday till 9, Sunday ends at 5. Again, 100% in agreement with the ad hoc recommendation. PA usage, Monday through Thursday until 7:30, limited twice per week, days to be determined by the athletic director. That's, well, we'll get into use, the typical schedule in a little bit. Friday until 10:00 p.m., we, the high school, Margaret has requested three Friday night games per season for football. And then, Saturday until 8:00 p.m., Hingham Youth Football's requested two Saturday nights per season, and then, Sundays end at 5. Again, this is 100% in agreement with the ad hoc recommendation. So I wanted to go through what a typical schedule might be and night start times for, with typical PA usage, because I think there's a lot of question about that. So, boys' and girls' soccer, lacrosse and field hockey, don't use a lot of PA. They use, you know, typically, player introduction, National Anthem. You don't do play-by-play in any of these sports. Probably use it for emergency announcements if something needs to be, is required. And then, you know, on those senior nights, when it's the seniors' last game, we probably recognize senior players. These games typically start at 6:00. Hingham High Football, a little bit different here, we do the player intro, National Anthem, there's a halftime show for the dance team, and then, play-by-play. Friday night footballs across the league start at 7:00 p.m. Hingham Youth Football, which has requested the two Saturday night games, typically start about 4:00, and they use, they also have a dance team, they would use it for player intro, National Anthem, and halftime show. Hingham Youth Soccer requested a couple Friday nights. They would start at 7:00, and they don't require PA. And Hingham Girls' and Boys' Lacrosse typically start around 5:30, and they don't require PA. But again, if we need to make a public service announcement, we would like to reserve the right to do that. When we look at our field usage based on the history, we've always accommodated the youth sports. So what we did, we do, is reach out to the presidents of the youth sports and ask what they would like, would like to see for usage on this field. Hingham Youth Football would like two Saturday nights, and then, as their tradition has always been, to continue to use Sundays for the rest of their games. Hingham Youth Soccer, again, no PA required, would like two or three Friday or Saturday nights, and as available for practice. Hingham Girls' Lacrosse and Boys' Lacrosse, a little bit different, girls play on Tuesday nights, April through May, some Sundays, and then, their concerns there are, you know, the ground can be not conducive to tryouts in the early season, so if they could get on the field a couple of times during the early season for their tryouts, they would like to do that. And again, boys requested two to three Friday night games. So I put some sample calendars together for you. If you take into consideration, Margaret's requested that the varsity sports get three games on the multipurpose field under the lights. So that would, the fall season would be our heaviest season for using this field. You'd have football, soccer, and field hockey for each team, three nights, and then, two nights for Hingham Youth Football and Hingham Youth Soccer. So here's September, you'd have one Friday night football game, you'd have a couple of nights for soccer, and then, one field hockey game. You'd allow Hingham Youth Soccer on a Saturday, Hingham Youth Football on a Saturday night, and then, Hingham Youth Soccer on a Friday night. So it's a, it's a total of six, six games during September. You roll that into October, so that you can ensure everybody gets their three games in. Again, you have two field hockey games at night, you have two soccer, girls' soccer, two boys' soccer, one football game, and then, Hingham Youth Soccer and Hingham Youth Football would each get a game during October, and then, their time would be over. And then, in November, one more night football game for the high school team. And of course, we've got Thanksgiving down there, they're just be practicing for the rest of the week. I think concern, there's concern about attendance in regard to night games, so we went out and asked our neighboring towns, what's their typical attendance at a night game? We've been basing a lot of everything we've done on this project upon the Veterans Night Game that we held last year, and that was such a huge success, it, it didn't seem like we'd be able to pull that off for every single night game we ever held. So, again, unfortunately, you can see, field hockey doesn't have that great of an audience. They typically get Cohasset 50 to 100 people at a night game, Hanover at 35 to 40, so it's pretty much the parents of the kids playing. Girls' and boys' soccer, they get a little bit bigger of attendance in Duxbury, as you can see, but about the same numbers. Football, that is your, your bigger audience there, coming to see those Friday night light games. Cohasset and Norwell seem to have big numbers there, 500 to 1,000, but again, that's well beneath the 2,100 people we experienced at the Veterans Night Game that we held. Boys' Lacrosse and Girls' Lacrosse, so good, good numbers there from Duxbury and Cohasset, but again, well within the experience that we had here in Hingham for the one night game that we held. And I think, in working with the chief of police and, and the parking and traffic study, I think we could accommodate these safely with the new parking plan. One thing that ad hoc did not address, and something that we thought we should consider would be summer use of the multipurpose field. Use of the field outside the school year would be permitted Monday through Saturday until 8:30 p.m. during the summer hours, summer days, with no scheduled use on Sunday. No amplified sound would be allowed. Lights might be available, but then, I went ahead and Googled sunset for the summer, and really, you know, if you're only using it till 8:30, sunset starts at 8:25 on July 1st and just changes minimally until August, so, you know, I don't see a lot of light use there. see a lot of light use there in regard to summer use. There are some notes. The policy suggested that we prioritize users in the following manner. Of course, being the school committee, we chose Hingham Public Schools as the first priority. Second would be Hingham Youth Sports, third would be Hingham Organizations, and then fourth would be other groups if there's remaining availability. Additional notes, there was some questions about tournament games. We'd like to be able to host a tournament game if, if, if we can, so that would be at the discretion of the AD with permission of school committee. Scheduling events will be timed to ensure safe entrance and egress for cars. Again, that goes back to that centrally scheduled, you know, application that comes into Barbara Pine, rolls up through everyone. There is a clause that we've asked, if something happens during, during the game or extends the game due to, like, someone getting hurt in the field, that we allow the lights to go on fifteen minutes past the lights out, just to make sure everybody can, can access the field safely. There's a governor, there would be a governor in the sound system, the lights would be on a timer, and the rules for lights and BA will be posted in the press box, so that everybody is very well aware of that. Once the multipurpose field has been put into off, into service, there would be an annual review conducted by the school committee of the usage policies and its impacts on users, neighbors, and communities for each of the first two years. We make sure those would be publicly posted and get in touch with everybody that would be concerned about the usage policy, and then thereafter every three years. And here's a rendering of the multipurpose field. We just got this in today. It's not exact, but I thought you'd like to see it. And that's it, as far as my recap of the usage policy. I don't know if you have questions, or...
I'm sure we have questions, so if someone could turn the light, thank you. So I think it's better if we talk about use, and then go on to the, sort of, volume and the traffic and, and the parking and that kind of thing. So sticking with this use policy, does the board have any questions? Carrie?
Carol, the, is this, excuse me, this is a sample schedule and calendar for the fall. Is the spring the same schedule, basically?
It's less, because it's, there's less sports. There's really only lacrosse that would be on the field.
And in terms of the, in terms of the non-school day events, say, Saturday and Sunday, in the, in the fall, I don't see any Sunday events scheduled, but I do see some Saturday events. I'm wondering, in the spring, are there no Saturday and Sunday event scheduled?
Actually, there is Sunday football games that I, I probably should have put up there, but that's, 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 that's always been the case, and I was trying to show additional usage as far as night usage goes, so...
So what would the, in the spring and the, in the, in the fall, what would the frequency of Sunday games be?
There's six Sundays.
Six Sundays and the hours of those?
There, with the variance, Hingham Youth Football currently uses it now, so it, I think it would start at twelve in September, and I think ends at five.
At five?
Yeah.
And so would there be, I'm trying to get a sense of, I see where the lights go off. Trying to get a sense when the lights come on, on these different times in the fall and early, early spring. Is it in terms of, you know, the duration during the day, that the activities would require that kind of use and elimination?
Right, so I would, I would assume they wouldn't need lights starting at twelve, which is, I mean, why they've run their games on Sundays now during that time period anyways?
It's usually four to five, essentially. In terms of the, the different activities scheduled, at what point in the day are the activities not directly the school, high school activities, with people directly from the high school, and are the activities that would be used by people who aren't directly involved with the high school?
Well, you know, we haven't, Margaret and I were talking about that the other day, that, you know, the teams are going to want to practice, because they're not used to playing on, on a synthetic field, if that's what it is. So she would probably stack practices. You know, right now, they all run out, and they practice till four o'clock, five o'clock. She might stack practices, so, you know, football would practice, and then field hockey would be able to go on afterwards.
At the, at the different activities, let's say, in the afternoon or in the evening, are the number of attendees, what's the range in terms of numbers of attendees? I'm thinking, let's say, the Saturday football game events and/or the Sunday football game events are distinguished from the daily events. I mean, how many people would actually be in attendance, other than the players, at the different events that are both in the school hours and then also, you know, in the school afternoons and then outside of that? I'm trying to get a sense of scale of the activity level.
So, you know, we're not adding sports, you know, we're not adding teams to any of this, so the, the numbers are going to stay pretty much what they are today. So if you have a typical field hockey game, for instance, you know, I mean, really, it's just two parents per player, and then, you know, if they have a boyfriend or a girlfriend. So it's, you know, it's, I, I would go back almost to the, the night usage for just the typical field hockey, soccer, lacrosse games. I think when you start pulling in, you know, your, your Friday night light, that, that's where you're going to see more people attending there.
So in the evening, then, in the evening events that are scheduled, you probably get a, a usage level of the, you know, the size that you had on the Veterans Day? I'm trying to get a sense of, how many events do you have that have that activity?
I, you know, that was such an unusual event, that Veterans Day, because we invited all the veterans and their families. I just, I, I think we're going to be hard pressed to see that usage at, at any typical, what, what will hopefully become typical experiences for our children.
Did the variance that was for the Hingham Youth Football include amplification, or just lights?
No, the variance refers to amplification. It, it limits them to national anthem, player introductions, restricts pump-up music.
And does that variance apply to a different field?
I was told the variance runs with the land.
So the, the variance runs with the entire property, or with the land of the original football field?
Yeah.
I can answer that.
Can you use a microphone?
Is it Michelson Field?
Yes, Mike.
Yeah, I, sorry, that would apply to Michelson Field, so going through that, it talks about the existing stands, the existing press box. When, we were before the ZBA, the question was, how far does it extend? And, and all that they would say with nothing before them is that it's in place and it runs with the land, meaning that it follows the title, and it would go from, from one owner to another owner. So our position is that it applies to Michelson Field alone. What you're seeing is, the school committee, and as far as putting together the policy, is looking to pretty much mask what's in place. The big question, and it has to do with the, the calendar, and Gary's question, was, what are the events that are outside of what's, you know, ordinary there, or what's, what people have gotten used to? So with respect to that, the intent is to, to get those hours of operation, for example, and have those carried over. Folks are used to it. When the other teams would come into Hingham, that's about when they have the Sunday games for those leagues. What we did do was we extended the hours a bit earlier, because we were running into some problems where the towns would show up. I think the start time for the games was twelve, they'd show up at eleven, if you will, and then, once those games got started, and the kids' games, they have three there, but they're real short, much shorter than the older kids' games. But towards that third, the end of the third game, from, say, halftime on, it really started getting dark quickly, so that, that was, we went into, to the zoning board, and we, we shifted that slightly. So the hours that you see proposed here are the same as what are in place for Michelson Field now.
Okay, so the answer to that question is, I think, what I understand is that the variance that was granted by the zoning board of appeals does not apply to the new field?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And one other question for you, Jeff, while you're up there. Are you being paid by the hour?
Yes.
Okay, so this is an additional cost to the taxpayers, you and, and the other lawyers' fees?
Yes.
Okay. That'd be interesting, I think that that's an important item for the taxpayers to know how much the lawyers are costing.
Great.
Because I think that's relevant, so that would be helpful for us.
Yeah, we provided all that to the town clerk.
Okay.
Two sixty-eight A requires all disclosures, so that's all been done.
All right.
Thanks.
I'll check with the town clerk.
Great.
Would the practices that you talk about, Carol, require lights? The practices that go on the field as teams are preparing to use the field? You said that you'd, you know, stagger them?
I, I would think eventually, as we got into the later months.
Okay, so we might have more nights where lights are used?
Well, if you look back...
In order to accommodate practices?
If you look back on, let's see, there's separate times.
Right, but I have this schedule, which is, doesn't include football, youth football.
But this is a sample, don't look at it.
I know, but still.
It does, it includes...
It's supposed to give you an idea, and it, it...
It's, it does have youth football on there for Saturday nights.
It does not have the Sunday youth football?
No, it doesn't, because we don't use, we don't use, they don't use lights now on Sundays, because they, that's why the variance was changed, to accommodate the earlier start time, so they can get their games in before the lights need to come on.
But I'm just, was just understood from Jeff, and I could be wrong, that the lights will be used, because it starts to get dark, and they'll be used for potentially at least an hour, from four to five. That's what I heard.
Well, we've been able to do it for the last few years without any lights. So I would, I would assume that they could, could continue using Sundays without lights.
All right, so, so how many practices now? I mean, so, I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to understand is, because my concern is, as a planning board member, as elected member by the townspeople, how is this going to impact the abutters in terms of how many nights the lights are used? And I look at this, and I think, okay, not bad, but then I start thinking about practices. I'd like to know exactly how often the field's going to be used. Is it going to be every Monday through Thursday until eight thirty?
Well, for games, for games, it's going to be used at least two nights.
Right.
With PA. We, we have light usage...
But now we have practices, no PA, I assume, for practices?
Right.
But maybe, so how many nights for practices? This is important to people. This is important to people, and so is for us.
We agree. No, we agree, and we are, you know, we have not figured out a practice schedule yet. It's, we were just saying, you know, most of our high school kids come out and they go right to practice. We're probably going to continue with that, but I would think that before they're going to play a game on a multipurpose field, they'd need to practice at least once on there. So we do have a schedule here. It's, it's, it's right up here. It says, "Multipurpose Field Light Use." We have Monday through Thursday until eight thirty.
So, so what I understand, because we're talking usage, is that it can be used, I know, but I thought it was only two nights a week. That's what I understood, so now I'm understanding it can be used all nights until eight thirty. Okay, that's good to know. And I'm just tagging on to Gary's questions about attendance, because certainly one of the things I think about in terms of massing and, and usage is the number of bathrooms, twenty-six, which were, I think, brought down from what was required to fifty-two.
Fifty percent, yeah.
Which are required because of the number of seats, when it appears that not many nights are going to require that many. Is there a need for twenty-three hundred seats, or twenty-four hundred?
Well, we...
And therefore, twenty-six bathrooms?
We do, so we have, the grandstand is, our side of the grandstand is sixteen hundred seats. We need that, that's where we hold graduation.
You don't send to graduation?
Yeah, we, we need it for graduation, and we fill it up on some Thanksgiving football games. So it's, it's, it's not a more, it's, it's just what we have and, and feel we need.
We have sixteen hundred now, sixteen hundred seats now?
Yeah, about, I, I don't know the exact count. It's about that, yeah.
Yes, sixteen hundred now?
It's bench.
So you're trying to count though? So cer- certainly, I mean, one of the things, again, I think of, because we're trying to get our head around usage and what, what's going to be helpful for the people who surround this property and for, you know, I would hate to permit the Derby Street Shops for the day after Christmas or the day after Thanksgiving for maximum parking, because they have those days when lots of people are there. But I would not like to see double the parking lot, which we might have to see up at the Derby Street Shops in, in order to accommodate those people for those eight, ten days. So I hear what you're saying, that there are three events, or two events, graduation and, and the Veterans Day football game that require that much. I'm just wondering about twenty-six bathrooms. That's a lot of bathrooms.
Well, we, unfortunately, we agree with you there.
But, so maybe, if we agree with that, maybe we can think about sizing it down, because this is a big structure, a big change. You know, the lights are going to be higher than the, the trees. The amplification is going to change and affect people in a different way, particularly on Union Street, because the field is closer to them. So, you know, I just, I, I think Gary was sort of leading to that question about, about the seats, so I'm just, I'm just thinking about that. I mean, I just wonder, and I understand that an ad hoc committee did a tremendous amount of work, you know, I am a youth, I have been a youth coach. My husband coached Hingham High School lacrosse and soccer. My daughter was a varsity field hockey player, so I understand the issues of the fields pretty, as, as much as anybody does. My own experience on the field, coaching lacrosse, my husband's experience, coaching soccer and lacrosse, my daughter's experience playing field hockey. I get it, and, and I, I just, so often, we as a planning board are faced with, wow, this just seems like a lot, and that's, and, and I worry how that impacts the people who live there. So I just want to know, you to know where I'm coming from, in terms of the sizing and the impact.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and a change of life for these people in terms of sound systems until eight thirty at night, when they're trying to put their six-year-old to bed at seven thirty.
Yep, I, I agree, and that's why we agreed to put in the state-of-the-art sound system. We, there was two options presented to us, option A, option B. Option B is a little bit more expensive, but we feel, being, by being able to direct the sound and minimize the impact on the abutters, it was worth the expense. We also agreed to landscaping and fencing, and, yes, you know, we, we took into consideration everything that you just mentioned, and we, and, and we're trying to work towards a, you know, a good solution there.
Carol, one of the bases behind my question on the attendance, was trying to figure out how many events cannot be fully contained within the current facilities as proposed now? How many future events cannot be fully contained on-site? Let's say, for example, in terms of parking, and it has to do with attendance, because it's known with people who come to these games, whether they're playing in the game or whether they're attending the game, or whether they're dropping kids off at the game. Because what I read in a lot of the reports is, is that events that are like the Veterans Day event cannot be contained within the site as proposed. There's an overflow. And I'm trying to get a sense of, in the calendar here, just in terms of activity, not, let's say, sound and light for a minute, but just activity, if we didn't have the sound and we didn't have the lights, just for the sake of discussion, how many events that on this calendar would require overflow outside of the site? Because I, I read that there was like a two-hundred-and-fifty car deficit on the Veterans Day game.
Veterans Day, yeah, yeah.
And that tells me that there's so many, the site can handle so many people. How many people events would be over that limit?
I, I would, I would think it would only be Thanksgiving, to be honest with you. I mean, the bigger events are typically, you know, graduation, Thanksgiving, town meeting, and Election Day. Dance recitals, dance recitals, fall sports night. It's, it's not, they're not typically a game.
But wouldn't the football games basically bring that? I'm thinking Saturday and Sunday, non-weekday events, based on what I'm hearing, would they bring more than, they bring the same number as the...
But Saturday and Sunday, we're running now.
They're already coming.
I mean, they're already, we are already experiencing that traffic and that, and that attendance.
Okay, Gary, I'm going to let these guys ask their questions.
A couple questions, Carol. First of all, in terms of the use, the only teams would be the varsity teams that would use the night games, correct? Did JV and freshmen play right after school?
Right, they, they, you know, they go right in a row.
Right, so they play like three, and then the varsity typically uses the field later. Secondly, obviously, you said five or six home games for football. One of those games is Thanksgiving Day game, it's only played at ten AM on Thanksgiving, so that's a night game that'll be eliminated every other year, in terms of the usage, correct?
Right, we only scheduled three, Margaret only wants... Right, we only scheduled three, Margaret only wants three night Friday, Friday night games for football.
And, last question I had, on your first slide, you have, the Hingham Little League is a potential user, and I don't, where's, where's the Little League diamond going to be? I remember two softball diamonds on Union Street.
Yeah, those, that was a list of existing users.
Oh, was it?
Right.
Because I don't, I just, one is Little League diamonds can be built up there, but I don't think, okay, it's just as.
There's my. Sorry.
There you go.
Oh, Hingham Little League.
Because there's two softball fields on Union Street, correct? So, all right, I just wanted to talk about that.
I just took this from, I'm sorry, I took this list from the list of prior renters.
Okay.
So it's, it's.
The softball diamonds are sixty-foot diamonds with two-hundred-and-ten-foot foul ball distances that happens to coincide with, with Little League.
Yeah.
The difference is a fully skinned infield and a flat mound.
Also no mound.
No, that's correct.
My, my last question would be, have you thought about what happens when you have a soccer game that goes into overtime, an overtime game? Because you have a six o'clock start policy, but turn the lights off at eight-thirty, Monday through Thursday? You'd have, you do have potential for overtime.
I'll let Margaret answer that, yeah.
Hi, Margaret Connery. Uh, we don't play overtime in soccer, field hockey, girls' or boys' soccer, field hockey or girls' lacrosse. And if a boys' lacrosse game goes into overtime, it's sudden death. And football, they put the ball on the ten-yard line, each team gets four downs, and the team that scores wins. So it's, it's, if it's an overtime, it's very quickly, but most, most, most of our sports do not play in overtime. We end in a tie.
Quick follow-up on the boys' lacrosse, how long could that potentially, how long could the, I mean, sudden death until they score, is there a limit, ten minutes?
Oh, it's usually like a minute.
But is there a limit, or could it just keep?
They would play, there would be a timeframe, and I think it's, I think it's ten minutes, and, but typically, the way the scoring goes, it's, it's very fast.
I take it all these sports schedules are coordinated with existing activities that are going on within the school at night?
Right.
You factor all that in?
Well, these are samples.
Right.
But that would be, it would be factored in, again.
And is the Galway Rover, is that an out-of-town team, or, what is that? Is that rugby or?
That's soccer, it's club soccer, yeah.
Is it men?
No, it's children, it's all children.
So all the non-high school users are all Hingham youth?
Pretty much, yeah.
Except the Galway Rover.
Hingham Hull, yeah, it's, Galway's mixed, it's Hingham, mostly Hingham, but Norwell, Hanover, Coacet kids.
Are the practice sessions for the football teams typically as long as the games themselves?
Practice is really, sorry. Ray Estes, School Committee, practices for football are typically an hour and a half.
And they would start when?
Practice starts mid-August, it's during the day when it's light out, and then the season runs to the beginning of November, which is when playoffs are, and if you make the Super Bowl. So it's, the second week of November is the absolute latest with the Super Bowl, if you make it. So, practices typically are anywhere from five-thirty to seven, or six to seven-thirty, something like that. This past year, they were moved up early because of concern about the mosquitoes, to make sure that the kids were off the field, but again, it was in the overabundance of caution.
With respect to the tournaments, would those, would those envision a non-Hingham team playing?
Are you talking about high school tournaments?
Yes.
Yeah, Margaret, why don't we?
High school tournaments would only involve Hingham as the home team. If you're asking, would Hingham be used as a neutral site, no, we're not planning on that.
That wasn't the question.
Yeah.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. We, I am doing this, saw a couple of different towns' use policies, and the two most recent ones I looked at, they're just not quite as complicated as this, and they seem to say, okay, lights go off at seven-thirty every night, just always, seven-thirty, and then if we have Friday night games, they can stay on till ten o'clock, or something like that. So, I'm just wondering how, did you see, eight-thirty is kind of an industry norm kind of thing? It seems a little bit later than most, except for the three Friday night football games, which I understand most start at seven, go to ten, that seems like, like that happens. I'm just wondering how you got to eight-thirty Monday through Thursday and nine o'clock on Saturday on the lights? My family sits down to dinner at seven-thirty, so I kind of use that as my, like, personal, kids go to bed at seven-thirty. Seven-thirty just seems like a good number to me. So that's my question about that.
Yeah, I was just, sorry, I was looking, were you referring to NADEX usage policy?
Belmont, and I think, I don't, I think NADAM was the second one.
Okay. Yeah, NADEX, we have, I have, King Phillips lights have to be off at nine-thirty. NADEX, I mean, we just, we thought it was the most reasonable, reasonable time, actually, especially for, you know, running games that start at six.
But you have the sound until seven-thirty, so I'm just wondering why the, sort of, so that sort of dictated, okay, there's something that's ending at seven-thirty, right, on Monday through Thursday, because we're turning off the sound?
No, we just, we just wanted to limit the PA, we didn't want the PA to run with the lights, right? Because the, the games that are be playing during the week, they don't require play-by-play, they just need player introduction, national anthem, and then if, you know, there's no play-by-play required with field hockey, soccer, lacrosse, which are usually played Monday through Thursday. It's really only Friday night football.
So if I understand correctly, on the, really how you use this field, to me personally, without sound and without lights, you're doing a fine job right now of doing that. I would, I would talk a little bit about the traffic coming and going between games, particular, just my, my direct experience with Field Street, you know, sort of that the games are too close together, because the traffic just becomes a nightmare at that time, so, but that's the next conversation. When you use the field without lights and without sound, you know, I believe you're doing a great job up there as it is, and so I wouldn't argue with that. But what, what I'd like to talk a little bit about is the sound and light policy, and I think that that calendar that you provided with us is a little bit misleading, because there's so many questions about, oh, on top of the sound on Sunday. So let's just talk about the total use, whether it's a game or a practice, whether it's existing or additional, right?
Okay.
Monday through Thursday, the lights will be on until eight-thirty at night. Every night.
Yeah, if they're needed, we, I mean, we just, yeah.
Right, right, no, this is the outside, just, I want, I just want to go to what the outside possibility is, because, you know, without surprises. So Monday through Thursday, the lights can stay on until eight-thirty at night, and there can be sound until seven-thirty, two of those nights.
Right.
Okay. On Friday nights, the lights can stay on till, since there's only three Friday night games, I'm just curious about other Friday nights, will those lights be on till eight-thirty every other Friday night? You know, is that a possibility, or will the lights only go on three Friday nights a year?
No, because we have Hingham Youth Soccer who wanted to use Friday, two Friday nights, right, during the season. And I think that's reflected on the calendar.
And I'm just trying to get one place where I see what the outside possibilities are every day of the week, you know? So on Fridays, Mondays through Thursdays, on the lights, I get it, eight-thirty, sound, and this is only the school year that we're talking about, because the summer is different.
Right, right.
So this is for the school year, I understand Monday through Thursdays, on Fridays.
Right now you have a, a possibility of up to five Friday nights.
In the whole school year?
For the fall season.
For the fall.
For the fall season, because then you move to spring.
Wait a second, no, football and soccer would be five, okay, I'm just trying to get all the pieces on one piece of paper.
Judy, can I ask, can I ask you a question? Are you asking then, let's look at September twentieth, so there isn't a game that night, what, what would be the outside on that?
Yeah, so on Friday nights, can the neighbors expect that the lights will be on if it's not one of those five Friday nights?
Well, I, I mean, I guess, I mean, we haven't, we would only use it for football, so no, the lights would be off, unless Margaret wanted to hold a Friday night practice until, but it wouldn't go till ten, it would.
Right, so I just, I just want to put, you know, surprises are the rule of all of us.
Right.
So let's just put out there, so that nobody's surprised, oh, the lights could be, could be on until this time.
Yes, yeah.
On Friday nights, unless it's one of the five games, at which point it would go till ten, but what?
Right.
That's my question.
Right.
Eight-thirty?
No, ten, I think we have ten. Oh, if there's no.
If there's no game on a Friday night.
Eight-thirty.
Until eight-thirty.
Yeah.
So it's really.
No, no, no. The schedule we gave is representative.
Anybody could use it till ten.
Yeah, anybody could use it till ten then, it's not, they didn't.
So every Friday night, the lights could be on till ten.
If a permit was pulled and approved, but that's not a representative example.
So, yes, any Friday night, there could be, you know, ten, that's the answer.
Okay, and this is just the lights that we're talking about right now?
Right.
So, every Friday night, the lights could be on till ten, for the school year, I'm assuming, because they, you had a separate page for summer. So I'm just assuming that this is the school year.
It's fall, yeah, fall.
It's, it's basically September through November, and then the spring, March through June.
June.
But nothing is on any night during the winter?
No, we've, I mean, we, actually, we didn't talk about winter, because we've never used a field during winter.
But, so you're saying the lights are different in the spring than in the fall? They won't be on the same hours?
No, the, the policy works, but we don't have as many, you know, the, the hours that were voted by policy were just hours voted by policy.
Right, and then we'll talk about the games separately, right?
Right.
Like how many games and all that, but just for lights, there might be practices, whatever.
Right.
The, the fall season and the spring season are the same.
Right.
For the lights, right? And Monday through Thursday, they could be on until eight-thirty at night, Fridays until ten, Saturdays until nine, and Sundays, if they're needed, they could be on till five.
Five, right.
Right, for the lights only. The sound, I think, is more complicated, because it's really dependent on whether there's a game or not.
You only need sound really for, for a game, right?
Right, so there would be no sound unless there was a game. Monday through Thursdays, there would be the maximum of two games.
With PA, yeah.
That would use.
PA.
Sound, with the PA, right? Football, there would be three amplified games.
Right, yeah.
Are there ga, are there football games during the afternoon that would use the sound?
Saturdays.
High school.
High school, yeah.
But that's existing now.
That's existing now, yeah.
Sound, okay. But the high school football. And Saturday until eight o'clock, but that's not high school, that's only the youth.
Football, yeah.
And that's the sound for them.
Right.
And that's how many?
They requested two, yeah.
So, as far as, excuse me? I'm sorry to sound so obtuse, but it's just a lot of moving parts, which I'm sure you know, because you, you guys had to do all of this also. So, as far as the amplified sound goes, it's only used for football at night. No.
It's, no, they, Saturday games, like, today.
So you have a page on the sound that I'm going to get there.
Do you want me to? So night start games are typical PA use, is that what you're looking for?
Right, so the School Committee adopted usage policy, multipurpose field PA use. It's number page fifteen. On this, the, the, the PA could be u, this is not just night games. Again, this is, the PA could go on on any day of the week at three o'clock for a game. If the game started at three or started at four, it could go on, but that happens now.
Right.
If they use that field.
Yeah.
Except that most of the games are not played on that field, because the field isn't big enough. So there's going to be new games played on that field, like lacrosse or soccer.
Field hockey, yeah.
Field hockey, where you're announcing games, so there is new sound during daylight hours on that field. Because those field, those games are now played in bigger fields.
Right, so like today for field hockey, if we're having a senior game, right, Margaret would come out with a bullhorn. Right, so that game would just transfer over to the multipurpose field.
Just so that everybody understands that, that, that there's not just sound for these additional night games, but that there is sound from fields coming to the multipurpose, from games coming to the multipurpose field.
Right, absolutely, yeah.
When you decided, or when the ad hoc committee decided, and then the School Committee agreed that the Hingham Youth Football should have additional games until eight o'clock on Saturday night, well, until nine o'clock on Saturday night, with sound until eight o'clock, is that right?
Right, right.
What was the thinking behind that? Because I know they have fields with lights and sound on Beale Street for Hingham Youth Football, and they have Sunday use of field, so is the Hingham Youth Football growing? What, why this kind of Saturday night need for Hingham Youth Football?
Well, they, so they don't have, it's not like a, a game field where, where they're currently playing. So they rent our fields for, on Sundays now for that purpose. They've been renting fields outside of Hingham for their night games, actually, and I know probably Tom Hoffens here, and he could speak to it if, if you wanted him to, but that's something that, you know, youth football groups do all the time in other towns.
They have night, Saturday night games?
Right.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other questions about the use?
I'm just, I'm just trying to understand in terms of the, the existing now, the PA and game activity without lights played during daylight, there's a certain program right now that's used on, on the fields as they, as. And then if lights were put in, then there would be an expansion of those activities into the nighttime hours where the fields would be lit, and then the PA system would follow that into those nighttime hours as is proposed. And then in addition, then there's a Saturday and Sunday use, which now is pretty much daytime, if I have it understood right.
Right, right.
And the PA is a function on those two days, on the variance, is that what controls?
Right, that's what dictates, yeah.
Is the variance, so that if lights were introduced on Saturday and Sunday, then the PA use would be expanded on the fields that aren't covered by the variance?
I'm going to let Jeff answer that one.
Yeah, Gary, you would be, basically what would happen is, the sound would be on the multi, you know, the multi-use turf. So for example, if we look at the, I think there are two Saturday night, the football games start at four, and then they'll, they'll go into a Saturday night, so that's just the Hingham Youth Football. It's got, your question was the PA, and the PA for that is basically the player intro, which is the beginning of the game, so it's, you know, Gary, you know, turned up dick, number fourteen, and they just run through the kids' names. There's the national anthem, and then there's a halftime, there's a halftime routine where the, the girls go out and they do something, which is choreographed.
There are boys on the team, too.
That's right. Who go out, and that's part of, of what they do. And then that's it for, you know, what you've got subject to the sound restrictions. So that's different than Michelson Field, because the Michelson Field's very unique, because it's, it's always been put into that Sunday slot, and the variance applies, applies to that. So what happens is, that comes off, that use thing goes over to the new field. The other question. The other questions, which good questions, because there are all of these other, you know, games going on. There could be a freshman lacrosse, a JV soccer game. So those are, those are going on in different fields at different times. What, what you're going to do is, for example, what Carol just said with, if Margaret has a senior game, what she'll do is she'll announce with the bullhorn, you know, it's a recognition for the kids who've been with the program for X number of days. Often, you know, a parent will come down and there'll be a carnation, et cetera. Those, instead of happening with the bullhorn, will, you know, we expect that they would just translate to, to this field. And again, you've heard the information, it's, you know, I don't think we have any information on the bullhorn, but we've heard a lot about the, the sound system, you know, et cetera, so.
I'm just trying to get a sense of scale as to the increase in use. Is it intensity increase and as a frequency of game scheduling increase? So if I were to live within a hundred feet of the field, to understand it in plain English, you know, there is an, an activity level increase that's proposed, and it would be seven days a week. Whereas now, the activity is, it's, isn't seven days now, but it's daylight hours. So there's an evening extension, which is about a third increase, plus or minus, in terms of the evening hours that would be used under lights?
I didn't actually calculate it out, I mean, it's, so, I mean, I guess a third would be a, a fair amount to, to estimate it at. But yeah, I mean, we're not adding teams, so it's, and it's the same amount of games, and it's the same amount of practices. So it's just, you know, reconfiguring the, the fields that they'll be on.
And then in the scheduling of those, you have the, one game starts and ends, another game starts. You know, there's a transition point when games are ending and other games are starting, when they're going to be using the same or the adjacent fields.
Right.
And so if, I'm trying to get a sense of, is it linear? Or is it, is it, is it not exponential, but I know, in other words, you could double the activity at the transition time because the field uses longer available during the day? In other words, day and evening, what happens when the day transitions to the evening use? And what happens to all that traffic? I'm thinking in, in the context of Saturdays, when you have all the games transitioning, starting and stopping on Saturdays, it's pretty intense in terms of the traffic. And then, and then, then the follow-up question there is, how many of those are similar to the kind of Veterans Day game? Because the Veterans Day game and all the traffic reports was pretty intense in terms of the spill out into the neighborhood.
Right.
And how typical is that for the rest of the activity? I'm not sure.
So let's take that in two parts, all right? So the first part, let's take a Saturday as an example. Suppose we have a Saturday night football game, or Saturday football game. Hingham would play, I don't know what time, Margaret, would we play on a Saturday, 12?
No, we play until one.
One. So, you know, perhaps I, maybe what would happen is we would reschedule, well, it wouldn't really change anything because what we've got is, you know, a typical hi, high school football game that we're going to play. So you're going to, you know, that, that field will be used for football. And then if, suppose Hingham Youth Soccer, girls wanted to come over and practice after the football game. They would prac, they practice on Union Street. It's just a relocation of their practice, you know, so they would park.
Would the football game go from, let's say, one to four, four thirty, and then the next game go from four thirty to eight thirty on the same field?
That, you know, it, it, for, it wouldn't be us, you know, on that.
No, I meant, I mean, other people using the field.
Yep, they, we could res.
Might rent the field or schedule the field. If Hingham isn't using it.
Right.
With that, then, because it's open for seven hours and the game is three and a half, does that mean that each field's got two games in a day? And then there's the transition time between both activities. What happens then in terms of the activity and the traffic and all? That's what I'm trying to get to.
Right, so we would take into account the transition of the traffic, and I think that's a part, you've seen that in the traffic plan and, and what we submitted. What, all you're doing is transitioning what would have been held on a different field over to the multipurpose field.
And that, I think we have to let that go to the next part of tonight, is what happens between games as far as the traffic management.
Can I just sort of make one other point? I think what, what I'm understanding, and, you know, having gone through this process a number of times, including at the Ward Street Field, the lights don't appear to be as nearly as significant an impact, which is surprising to me, but I've got my head around the, the, you know, improved technology, as the amplification system. I mean, I really do think that the use of that is going up much more than two thirds.
That's where it's going.
And that's something we really have to look at, because we can't say, well, all these other, other towns have it. That may or may not be true. What we have to look at is in this location, in this neighborhood, how is it going to affect the people who live near there? And, and the increase of that sound system going until 10 o'clock at night, some days a week, eight thirty every other night a week, how is that going to impact people and, and what does that mean? And certainly the town, sound technician didn't make me terribly comfortable that it wasn't going to have significant impact on Union Street particularly. Or, or, let me repeat, let me rephrase that, have a significant increase in impact on Union Street. Maybe lessening impact on Downing, but still lessening impact, but many, many, many more hours. And I think it's something we need to get our hands around, because that is, again, a life change for people.
Right, so again, PA is only used for games.
Yep.
And we have a limited game schedule. Back to your, um, second part of your question, which was the Veterans Day event. Again, I don't see many events like that at the high school. It was an unusual, it was a play, it was a league game, with someone who was very close to us. A lot of people came, and we invited all the veterans. And it was an unusual event for our children, so everybody turned out. The highest use of our parking and, I think, traffic is, again, town meeting, spring and fall, sports nights, dance recitals, and election days. So, you know, that, and that's, I think we've, we've developed a plan that, that would help us with that.
Maybe we could go through a little bit more in detail, as Judy said, when we get to the traffic. I reread the traffic report after our last meeting at the suggestion of the consultants. And I have a number of questions, because they're saying that there's a certain activity level that will happen. So maybe when we get to the traffic part of it, we could go over that in more detail.
Okay.
I have another question about the sound. Two questions about the sound. One is, as far as non-high school teams, what I can see from all the paper that I have absorbed is that they're, the amplification system for non-Hingham High School teams and their counterparts are currently Sundays from either eleven, eleven thirty, or twelve till five o'clock, and that would remain the same.
Right.
And there would be additional use of amplification by non-Hingham High School teams on Saturdays, but only two Saturdays per season.
Right.
And those two Saturdays, the amplification would start at what time?
It's four.
Is that, is that in your paper?
Yeah, roughly, it roughly runs four to eight, so they would play three games.
So, but only two Saturdays from four to eight PM, and?
Per season.
For football, only football.
It's really.
So it's per year.
Football, like soccer, lacrosse, did not request PA use at all.
Right, so as far as the sound system goes, in the entire year, the non-high school teams that would use the sound system outside of Sundays, which were, you're requesting what's already happening.
Right.
Are two Saturday nights per year from four to eight o'clock.
Right.
But what about your?
Per year.
Statement last, at the last meeting about the Title IX, having to have other teams use the PA system.
This is non-high school.
She was asking about non-high school, yep.
So non-high school.
But you're right, Sarah, you're, I mean, we would use it for the girls also during the week.
Yeah, so it's going to be a much more increased during the week, yep.
Oh, absolutely, I'm just trying to say.
Not necessarily all night.
This is all Hingham High School, girls getting equal access as boys, teams moving from outer fields to this inner field. So it's not an increase in activity. The real increase in non, I'm just trying to figure out what the non, so are you guys willing to say that there won't be any other use of that amplification system by a non-high school team other than those two Saturday Hingham Youth Footballs?
That's something we'd have to discuss, but, I mean, I didn't get a request from boys lacrosse or boys soccer, or, or girls soccer, you know.
I, I, I just think it would simplify this process a lot if people could sort of be assured that as far as the non-high school use of this field for the sound, that we're really talking about two days from four to eight o'clock in a year. That to me sounds like, you know, it's, it's not going to, that doesn't sound like a huge thing to me. But if it could be that every team now starts to line up for their Saturday from five, four to eight, and every Saturday of the year from four to eight, the sound's going for people under, you know, before ninth grade using the sound system, you know, that extreme sounds extreme to me. So I'm just wondering if, if we can narrow that down.
If we can supplement that, the other thing is, you're asking excellent questions. Like, what we tried to do is, we tried to show the, the extra pieces, and you're asking very good questions. The inverse, which is categorize, you know, Tuesday night, Wednesday night, et cetera, which is not the way that we did that. We can go through and come up with more specifics, which you folks, I assume, are going to want to look at as part of any conditions.
I think everybody here would want to know what the outside possibilities are.
And I don't, I don't think just, I don't think we're just looking at night use. I think that the increase in daytime potential use of sound on the PA system is something we need to, to understand, to get our hands around. I don't really understand how much it's going to be used during the day. And I think that, you know, that's a totally different.
Yeah, PA is typically only used for games. I mean, it's not, so, and you have your game schedule there.
Or the nighttime game schedule.
No, no, we have a whole game.
No, you have a whole game schedule there.
That shows you, by, by sport.
By sport, game schedules.
You just have to find it.
Well, how many games there were.
How many games there are and how many at home.
On these charts.
Are they?
How many home games there would be for each sport each season.
Yeah, but, so.
And, and you.
Wait, Bill has a question.
But regardless, though, the sound is only used player introduction.
Right.
And most of it's international.
National anthem.
And then some play by play in football, and then a song at halftime.
So, so. I think this is really important to, as a, as a supporter of your cause, I think it's really important that we sort of really quantify what we're talking about here. And if, and if the non-high school use is only those two four-hour periods, and if the use of the field, of the amplification system is really only for these games, and as Bill said, for, for those two purposes, yes, there will be an increase over what there is now, but it's, it's not all sound all the time.
No, I, I think we can say it's not all sound all the time, right? I mean.
You know how much sound.
I think one thing to, to follow up on Sarah's point, too, relative to the spill on the sound, even though it might be used less in terms of the clock, the hours of sound, the spill on the sound is harder to contain than the spill on the lights. From what I heard from I've last week's, or last meeting's presentation.
No, I agree.
And one of the things in following up on that and looking at a couple of other athletic facilities is that in listening to the Kevin Antachi presentation, they were using larger sound speakers, but directionally focusing them so the sound would start at the west and go to the east on the field. But that the sound would still, in terms of decibel spill, would go over the lot line into the Downing Street properties.
And Union.
And Union Street. And looking at a couple of other athletic facilities that have used smaller speakers, more speakers, speakers centralized in the stands, would that be a way to contain that sound, even if it's, let's say, on the day or the night? Would that be a way to contain that sound within the field and the bleachers, rather than having it project? Because I think there's two issues. One is how much it's used, but also how much spill is there?
Right, and I thought Matt, who is the sound specialist, explained really well that, you know, if we went with the larger speakers directed, and then he had several locations of the speakers within the bleacher system, he designed the most, the ultimate system to limit the travel of sound.
I felt like that was, that we already discussed that question, Gary, and that was the case.
Yeah, I, I was.
I didn't quite get that from his presentation, maybe I could ask him that question again.
Yeah, I, I, and, and that's, I'm, I'm pretty sure that's what we decided to go with. There was, we asked him to relook.
It's eight thirty, and I would love to open this up to the people who are here for, you know, some questions, comments, proposals. We have received a number of proposals, most notably one from Benjamin Burnham with a proposed use policy that's different from the one that we have here. And I've circled it and marked it up, and in fact, the questions that I asked tonight had a lot to do with having read that. So I don't know if, well, I'll leave it up to you guys what you'd like to say and, and sort of how we can absorb it. But, but as far as very specifics go, we do have on this one here. So again, please identify who you are. If your presentation goes beyond five or six or seven minutes, I might have to just ask you to save it for another time. So I apologize for that upfront, but please, go ahead.
Ben Burnham, 11 Downing Street. I represent some of the neighbors and concerned citizens in what you have before you, a usage policy that we suggested. We, we did present it to the school committee, and they gave us their feedback, and we made some changes to accommodate. I don't, we didn't meet all of their, all of their recommendations. First, I, I would like to point out that we do appreciate what the ad hoc committee has done. I was in half of those meetings. I don't know how those people spent all those hours doing that. It was, it was, we do owe them for all their hard work. And we want a successful project, but we also, we want to make sure that, well, that we, that we can give some input to this process. What's also important to note is that we want the existing users of those fields to remain whole. We're not taking anything away from them. We want to make sure we don't take anything away from them. I can appreciate how granular you can, you're getting here tonight. Our, our concern is primarily the nighttime usage. And, and the proposed policy has, has few restrictions, what you saw here, in our opinion. So right now, we have no nighttime use. The decibel level, according to the sound engineer, is somewhere around forty dB. And with crowd noise, I believe that goes up to somewhere around eighty. And that's a four hundred percent increase. That's not twice as much, it's four hundred percent. So this is our primary concern. I think when you consider how contentious lights have been in this town, but you see us acknowledging, I mean, we're, we're saying it's okay to bring the lights in there. We respect Dover, we respect this board, we respect Dover. The lights will be put on those fields pending town meeting. I, I think when you, when you, when you look at how contentious they have been, we've come drastically to the middle. And, and we're, we're willing to negotiate. We're willing to meet with the parties involved, so we don't have to burden the board. It's just for us, the nighttime usage, we would like to see it restricted to the Hingham High School athletics.
Well, and what I think I just heard was the only non, are you talking about sound or lights?
Lights and sound.
Oh, okay.
At night. And then the, the zoning board meeting from the nineteenth, that was not my understanding, what Attorney Tachio and Attorney Murphy, I'm sorry, Morgan, brought up. There are elements of the variance that specifically speak to Michelson Field, but there are also elements that do not. So I would, I would encourage the board to discuss with the zoning board. They didn't have, they didn't have anything before them where they could rule. So I think it's important to talk to the board about what parts of that variance would stay intact on the multipurpose field.
Is there a particular part of that variance that you think should or should not remain intact?
Well, the bleachers are going to be removed. So any context to the bleachers that are on that track would, would no longer apply.
Right, so I was asking about the rest of it. Is there something in particular that you would like to see stay or go as far as that variance goes?
The sound, the sound. There's a amplification policy there for Sundays, and we put that in our policy here.
And I don't think the school committee is asking to change the Sundays. And I don't think the school committee is asking to change the Sunday amplification schedule.
Uh, I don't know about the Sunday, specifically the Sunday amplification schedule, but there were other aspects in there about the way that the speakers pointed, reasonable levels of sound. I don't know how you define reasonable, we'd have to discuss that. And there was a, there was one other, oh, to, to point away from a butters, and it was for announcement purposes only, or informational purposes only, I believe, was, was the text, was where the terms used.
I think we have the language here, just to, um-
Page seven.
My pages are so-
Seven. Are you looking at my presentation?
Yes, you have the language from the, oh, here it is. So regarding the set, well, it says regarding music, so I don't know if that's all, the only language about sound in that variance, but it says regarding music, they may play the national anthem, halftime music for choreographed cheerleading routines, no other music, is basically what the, what the current variance says. So it does allow them to play the national anthem and then music in the middle. The, is the school committee doing play by, asking for play-by-play for, for Hingham Youth Football?
No change, we want no change.
No change on the Hingham Youth Football.
Is it play-by-play right now?
Yes.
Oh, it is play-by-play right now. Okay, so this variance doesn't talk about that. Okay, so they're, they're asking for no change from what's current on Sunday.
And this only applies to Sundays?
Right. So I think, Ben, what I hear from you is no, when you say nighttime, no lights, no sound for anything other than Hingham High School sports?
Correct.
What?
Well, what the-
We haven't really heard from the school committee about non-Hingham High School sports use of lights and sound, except for the Hingham Youth Football, Sunday existing and two additional. Aside from that, we haven't really heard about non-Hingham High School, your plans for non-Hingham High School act, use of lights and sound.
So I'm going backwards, hold on. There is nighttime use, Hingham Youth Sports.
Okay, so I have to find, that's page seventeen.
Yeah, Hingham Youth Soccer, requested two to three Saturday, Friday or Saturday nights. Hingham Girls Lacrosse, four Tuesdays, five-thirty to six-thirty, and Hingham Boys Lacrosse, two to three Friday nights.
And then practices.
But I assume the practices would, would-
It's daytime use there.
But I'm understanding that that can change if someone asks. I mean, we could have a nighttime game for other sports, any, every night, Monday through Thursday.
Agreed, without it specifically saying.
Right.
Right, I think that's what we need to work on. That's why I think we're trying to go into all this detail, is just kind of, let's talk about what the outside possibilities are, because I, I think it makes people nervous to think that, that we've talked about two of the nights, that something's going to happen till nine o'clock on Saturday nights.
Couple Tuesdays.
So you have it broken up by, you know, again, fall and spring, football and soccer, and then lacrosse is in the spring. That's, and that's why I did the sample.
So when you say nighttime use, that is when the lights, it starts whenever the lights go on-
Need to go off.
And it would go off when, in this other policy, in this time here.
So are you willing to, to say that, that those are the games that will be played on those nights with, you know, obviously some way within there?
Yeah, I mean, that's something that I, I represent, you know, I'm one of seven, but yeah, I think that's something that we would discuss, yeah.
Because I think, you know, on this, on this youth sports thing, as I said earlier, this is a really gray area for us as far as educational, non-educational. So I'd really love to come to something so that we don't have to define whether it's educational or non-educational. Yeah.
We'll, we'll do that, because that, that makes sense, because then everybody can take a look in, look at the parameter of what we got for the time.
So if Hingham Youth Football could live with two Saturday nights, maybe every other team could do two-night games, since they don't have any right now, and this is kind of bonus, and this is for little kids who will go to a high school field where they can play every night of the week, pretty much, giving those teams maybe two nights a week, I mean, two nights a year, where they can play under the lights and feel that experience. Maybe that's reasonable, but going to more than that is kind of-
Right, policy-
And then you're looking at the Hingham Girls Lacrosse until six-thirty, that's a much more reasonable time, you know, I don't know, there's, there's some-
Well, that's, I mean-
... because I'm a lacrosse coach, but no.
So the policy subcommittee didn't get in touch with all of the youth sports. I, you know, I did, so when I asked for what they would like, this is what they came back with.
But if we, but since they're not part of the Hingham Public Schools, maybe we can decide what we're willing to give them in the way of use, and then you all can decide which team gets which of those, we don't need to know which, which sport it is, but if we could say that it's only going to be X number in the year, and this in this season, this in this season for, for them, I think that would be a comfort level that people could, uh-
Right, if, if we can go through and articulate it better so that we understand it, and we talk to the people, we ask some further questions, we show it to you folks, everyone can look at it, and then if that's a part of what you folks deem to be part of your decision-making process, then I think that'll be really helpful for everyone to take a look at that. They're good questions, and some of, what I'm also hearing is, for example, I know if you dig down on this, if there's a, if there's a high school varsity game on Sunday or Sunday night, we know we can exclude that for the non-high school recreational users. So if you really sit down with this, and you look at, if it's this, it can't be this and this, that'll allow us to kind of break it down so it's something that's more easily digestible. We, we didn't do that, it requires a lot of work to, to work it out, but we can-
I know, but I think if you take the number two and just put it there on each one of those lines-
That, and that, that might be-
Then, then that does give you, you know, one here, one here, that gives the high school sports kind of drive the main part of the schedule, and then what's left, two for you, two for you, two for you, two for you, that's a little bit easier.
That may ultimately be where things end up.
But I think we need that kind of concrete number to make this fly.
Judith, can you?
Yeah.
I, I just, and I just want to come, just so we're putting this all together, so that it's neat package, and Jeff and I have been trying to talk about how to kind of make this work or flow. Some of the information that's on this PowerPoint, which is a terrific PowerPoint, such as, for example, there's only going to be player introduction, national anthem, halftime, that wasn't on like, just the tight written page policy that had been originally submitted, and I think that's what raised some of the concern, that, for example, the Sunday music policy was getting thrown out, because it wasn't spelled out that it was going to be the same. So I think that level of detail might help shorten this conversation going forward.
So, before, before Ben finishes, so that's the youth sport part of this, the non-high school team part that we just talked about, but the other part that you bring up is kind of the, the time of the night and this kind of, you know, this intensity of use from zero to a hundred, basically, beyond daylight hours that you all will be experiencing. In your proposal, you know, you came up with some times that are different than what the school committee came up with. How did you come up with those numbers?
Our children, bedtime, basically. So we, we, we did agree with them on Friday, I think in both cases, for amplified sound and for field lights, nine and ten o'clock, I believe that's what they have.
They have Friday, uh, sound until ten, and Saturday-
Oh, sound until ten.
-sound until eight, and lights until nine.
It was my understanding that the high school doesn't play on Saturday evenings.
No, these are just two Saturday nights for football, and then-
For youth football.
For youth football, so, so it would be one of the Saturday nights on this chart here.
Oh, okay.
So I just see it for youth football and youth soccer.
I thought you were referring to our proposed policy.
Yeah, he says no allowed Saturday or Sunday.
That Hingham High School doesn't play on Saturdays.
They don't. They play in the afternoon on Saturdays.
Two o'clock, please.
One o'clock, please.
One o'clock.
Right.
Yeah.
In the, in the needham usage policy, they don't have any activities on Sunday, whether it's day or night. Is that something that was considered by the committee in looking at this policy?
No activity or no sound?
I don't think they have any activity on Sunday.
They have activity there now. We didn't want to take that activity away from them. We want these groups to remain whole.
Okay.
We were speaking specifically to the lights, which is a new, a new feature.
So no evening activities?
Right.
Daytime activities are there?
Right.
Yeah, his is, when I said no, not allowed on Saturday and Sunday, that's for the lights.
Okay, I was trying to get an understanding.
I'm sorry, I'm just reading from your, your thing.
I didn't know that.
So as far as youth sports, use of lights and sound, different than what's currently there, this is the-
Correct.
-entirety, and I think what the school committee is committed to kind of making that a little more specific, and maybe, maybe making each of the numbers just two. Maybe.
I'd, I'd be willing to meet with the members again, offline, so that we don't bog down the board.
This is our, this is our meeting, and we want to move forward on this, so I, I don't-
Well, then what I would prefer to see is nighttime use for the high school, and let's try it for a year, and we will review this again in a year. We'll have a look back in a year and see how it goes.
And one of the things that your usage policy highlighted was a enforcement body that was made up of-
Oh, sorry.
I gotta sit down.
Oh, a planning board, zoning board, a building department, so in other words, that's not a bad idea to have a dip, you know, a, a governing body or a-
Right.
An enforcement body that is not the school department.
Right. Okay, okay, thank you, Ben. Yes, anybody else?
Yeah, that's very smart.
I would say the building inspector would be-
Wait, you can come up.
Under the whole statutory framework for this?
The building commissioner would be our zoning agent, our enforcement agent, but we can talk about it.
We can come up with information, too, I mean, it's-
Hi, my name's Wallace Foyer, I was on the ad hoc committee, as well as the ad hoc subcommittee, so I've been talking about this for two years. One of the things that Norman and I felt very strongly about was no amplified sound during the week whatsoever, and we came in very strong on that point, and we also wanted the lights out by, at first, seven, then we went to seven-thirty. At the end of the day, we were pushed, and pushed, and pushed, and finally, we agreed to eight-thirty, and two nights of amplified sound. So we were talking earlier about flipping the speakers on at three in the afternoon, that actually, right now, is, in this current policy, can only happen two days during the week. I would still love to see less amplified sound, that is my main concern. Right now, we only hear noise two days a week, so we hear noise, well, really, Sunday is our big amplified noise day. So if we go to night amplified noise and week amplified noise, we're going to be listening to music, we're going to be listening to announcements many days of the week. So I think in this policy, we need to be very specific on the type of noise that's played, because right now, we have a current variance that's abused, and I think if you have a usage policy that just says, oh, you can flip the switch on, well, what kind of things are they going to play? You know, we've got five-year-olds in our street, there's some music that's appropriate, there's some music that's not appropriate. There are also, I, I don't think the game needs to be playing music the entire time.
Is it, is that currently, because I know that's not allowed currently.
It's not allowed, but it is, it is, it happens occasionally. Another thing that I think is important, we're going back and forth on all these, you know, three games here, two games here, I think we should just limit the amount of night games. So just say, whatever you guys determine is appropriate, and giving the, all the teams enough games to play, if it's ten games, if it's twelve games, that's one thing that we didn't do in the ad hoc that I think we should have, is just put a cap on it, then you're not worrying about the men's softball league that wants to come in and play until ten o'clock on a Friday night-
Right.
-in November, so-
I think that's what we're trying to get to here.
So maybe wipe out some of the minutia by just saying, youth football gets their, you know, whatever they want, varsity soccer gets whatever they want. So that's our, those are our concerns, I mean, I think the, the night usage of the amplified sound is a big concern, because during, Monday through Thursday, twenty-six kids are going to bed between seven and seven-thirty. I never wanted eight-thirty. I was pushed to go to eight-thirty, I never thought it was appropriate to have that going that late, so that is a big concern, that weekday usage, so I won't keep you here very long.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you for being on that committee. Anybody else? You and then Tom, and then the person in the, Mr. Foyer.
Brett Hussey on Six Minute Man Road, and I just want to say thank you for all you guys, for all this, all the time you're putting into this and, and to the ad hoc committee, and, but just one point on the, on the usage, I mean, I'm, I think we should be going forward with the project, with, with the, the lights, with the, the field, and, and with the usage policy as far as the PA goes. The system we have right now, I think, from a spray standpoint, is, is pretty, pretty tough, is, in the, you can, you can't really hear what they're saying, and I think it probably sprays obnoxious noise across the road, so hopefully, a, a new PA system will, will help with that, and also, I think this, if it's a state-of-the-art PA system, you're probably not going to have people just getting in, going into this press box and using the PA system anytime they want, so I would, I would believe that it's probably going to be a situation where you're going to have to have somebody who knows what they're doing, being able to use that, so it probably won't be used as much as we might, might be concerned about. And then, as far as the usage goes, I don't think it's going to be, I don't think the PA system can be used at eight-thirty at night.
It's till seven, the sound is till seven-thirty on two nights between Monday and Thursday.
So as far as children going to bed and that kind of thing, I think that's, I think the ad hoc committee had kind of taken that into consideration with the seven-thirty on the usage policy for the PA, is that correct?
For the sound, it's still seven-thirty.
What, Friday, Saturday?
Friday, ten, Saturday, eight.
Friday would be ten o'clock for the football game, I think it was the, the thought process there, and then Saturday would be till eight o'clock, which hopefully, the kids get a little break, but, um-
But I, but, just an aside, I'm sorry, to the school committee, is I would really like to know how many Friday nights and how many Saturday nights, because I, I think having that possibility of it being every one is untenable.
Fair enough, but I mean, I think it's overdue, though, it's my feeling on, on having, on allowing our, our children to be able to have the opportunity to be announced at games. I have a couple of daughters and a son, but, you know, to, to have them be able to have an opportunity to be announced at, at maybe their, their last game of their, their soccer or lacrosse career would be, would be great. So I just want to tell you, I appreciate what you guys are doing, and, and I'm all for the project, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Mr. Hoffman.
Supposed to do an address to Tom Hoffman, Three Sherman Way, servant as president of Hingham Youth Football. I've been involved with Hingham Youth Football for the last eleven years. I wanted to bring some clarity and clean things up on some comments that were made. Number one, when we have three games in a row, whether they start at twelve in September, or eleven-thirty in October, or if we get into November at eleven AM, or we were to do it on Saturday, it typically takes about just over four hours to maybe five hours to get all three games in. So where we're asking for five o'clock on Sundays, is if we're starting at twelve, we're probably going to be done at four-thirty, quarter of five. When you get the eleven-thirty start, we're going to be that much earlier. By trying to play two of the, I'm calling them Saturday evenings, to me, they're night, not really night games, but you can debate that, would start at four PM, my guess would be, we'd probably be done around eight-thirty, twenty of nine, and get everybody cleared out, okay? Now, as far-
Was there a magic of four o'clock, like why not a little bit earlier, just so that we sort of are consistent with Mondays and Thursdays, Monday through Thursdays?
Four o'clock, well, in most towns, when they do their Saturday evening games, they start at five PM, so the issue is, if we're playing Barnstable, we're asking them to come up, or Bridgewater, Marshfield, whoever it might be, most of them are used to starting at five PM. So we said four, so we'd get finished earlier, probably by eight-thirty, nine o'clock. The other thing, when it has to do with crowds, so there's no misunderstanding here, quite frankly- quite frankly, you take three youth football games in a row, if you take the total attendance, we might just make a quorum for town meeting. We're lucky if we get a total of 300 people attending, in addition to the players on the field. So it's not a huge traffic issue. We usually fill up that back parking lot that backs up to the gym, and some people park out front. Now, if there's other events going on, so be it, but we don't bring in that many people. I would suggest to you, if we did the evening games, we might be in the number of 400 to 450 total for all three games, but I don't see an issue with an overwhelming traffic mass, okay? So I don't, I don't see any issues there in traffic. You'd made a comment about Judy earlier in this meeting and in the last meeting about traffic problems on Beale Street, and I wanted to try to address that, because that's where the practice facility is. And then there was some confusion about practice times. I think Paul asked a question about practice times. He might have been referring to the high school football team, and Ray answered it on the, on the youth football practices time. So, so there's no confusion here. Lynch Field's a practice facility for youth football. The second and third graders practice from 5:30 to 7:00 and they go home. The rest of the players are 4th grade through 8th grade, typically start at 6:00, and they're off the field between 7:30 and 8:00. We're allowed to, when I say we, the organization, both football and baseball, are allowed to have the lights on every night till 10:00 PM. They're on an automatic shut-off. Most nights, most weeknights, we're shutting them off at about 8:15, 8:20, because the practices are done. We want to make sure all the kids are off the field and accounted for, have a ride home, lights go off. The only lights that are left on are the safety lights around the Lynch Field Fieldhouse, okay? Weekends, typically the flag football, as it's getting darker, might be playing till 6:30, 7:00. Now, I know the baseball guys, when they get rainouts in the spring and have to double up and do double headers, they're typically having the lights on right till 9:30, 20 of 10. But that's totally different over there, so the practice times are different. At the high school, the varsity and JV typically practice right after school, and they get done. Now, I'm not serving as athletic director, but I would imagine Margaret is going to sit there and say, well, wait a minute, our field hockey team is going to be playing on turf, so as soon as football's done on a Wednesday, she may want to have the field hockey team coming to practice from 5:30 to 6:30. So I think it gives her great flexibility. So I think you got to play into that as well. The whole thing, I want to be reasonable. When it comes to the traffic, I want to make two comments, because I don't know if I'm going to get a chance to come up again. I heard John Thomas very loud and clear a number of times, okay? I talked to Rich Chamberlain, who's also a neighbor. I truly believe, and having served on the other ad hoc committee and lived in town for 25 years, the bigger issue is focus on all the non-athletic events that go on there. And they've talked about it, and I've seen it, the dance recitals, the musicals, all the big auditorium functions. What we need to do as a town, say, if you're going to have an event in the auditorium, you are required to have a police detail there, and let's start hiring tow trucks and put signs up. You'll get rid of your parking and traffic problem real fast, as soon as you start towing people and enforcing it. Those are the problem events. I don't believe, other than, and they've talked about this veterans night, there was just over 2,000 people there. It was unusual, because it was against Duxbury, it was for a league championship. It was a special event. I'd suggest to you, if we have Friday evening, three Friday evenings a year, high school football games, overtime, you'd probably average about 1,000 people a game, okay?
Thank you.
Which would be a little bit more than double in the Saturday games, and it's a great community event. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll get him later. Hi, my name's Tim Schoyer, 17 Crest Farm Road. I chaired, had the opportunity or to be the chair of the ad hoc committee. Appreciate all the people that work on the ad hoc committee. As you said, you're all elected officials. School committee's all elected officials. I consider our group elected by 87 percent. 1,818 citizens who came to town meeting that asked us to put a quality plan on the table, both from a standpoint of designing fields, but also, but also usage. So we had 25 meetings, spent a lot of time talking about it. Had a lot of give and take. At the end of the day, I don't think anybody, if the question is whether unanimous votes, I think that's a matter of record. You're all on, you know, you're all on committees. If the question is, did everybody feel like they got exactly what they wanted at the end of the day with regards to usage? I think the answer is probably, from my standpoint, no. I know from the Downing Street neighbors, no. And I would assume from, from most people, there was at least one or two things, and that's just the way, you know, a committee process works. I would put the usage into three categories. One, we're programmatic. So football, high school football starts at 7:00 or 7:30 every night. On Friday, excuse me, on Friday nights. So that was a reason why 10 o'clock, you know, was, was the time for that. For weekday sports, 6 o'clock would be the start. So 8:30 was the time that we decided would be the right time to turn the lights off. When it came to PA announcements and things like that, we decided 7:30 would be the right thing, even if games weren't over during the week. So we compromised, which I thought was, which I thought was very good, which I thought was good. And again, it was something that unanimously was, was approved by people. I would, when we approved and then took, and then took it to the school committee, excuse me, yeah, I need some water. They asked us the same, similar questions. Why do you have 7:30 versus 8:30? Should it be 8:30 versus 7:30? And we said, listen, we talked a lot, we spent a lot of time talking about it, and at the end of the day, this is what we agreed on, and we'd like you to vote for that. So I would ask the planning board to do, to do the same thing, excuse me, excuse me, which is, we go along with what the ad hoc committee asked for and to approve it as, as we asked for. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Does anybody else want to add to this? Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. They've chosen you. Sorry, and you go right after her.
Hello, I'm Sue Bombard, and I live at 14 Bel Air Road. I've been there for 15 years. And I am a board member for Hingham Youth Football for the last five years and a team parent for Hingham Youth Football for six years. And I am in favor of the, of the field project. And over the years, as a board member, I've had the opportunity to be involved in conversations about where we were going to hold our home games. And I believe that it's time that our kids were able to play on a field that's comparable to our competitors. And that would include lights and night games and also sound, which I think is all just an important part of that whole experience. I'd also just like to wrap up by saying that I feel really lucky to live in a town where there's so many dedicated individuals looking to contribute to the common good. I think the, what I've seen from the ad hoc committee and the school committee, they've been very thoughtful of the neighbors in, you know, even looking at more expensive ways to lessen the, the overall impact of the project. And I also think they've been charged with a really difficult job in, in researching everything that needs to be done for the project that got, in the end, got an 87 percent majority vote over a year ago. So I ask that you consider to move the project forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah.
Rich Chamberlain, 17 Union Street, oh, wait a minute, that's the high school, 22 Union Street. Next to my Lord and my family, there are probably two things that I love more than anything else in the world, and that's Hingham and sports. And I'm in favor of this project, even though it's probably going to upset some of my neighbors. But I do have some concerns, and I'm not totally on board with the usage, but I figure smart, people are going to figure this out. I'm in corrections, and my concern is enforcement and future enforcement. There are rules in place now regarding music, but they're not always followed. They simply aren't. And I can't get the Hingham police to come and ticket people who park illegally. I'm certainly not going to get the Hingham police to come and enforce if they're using the PA system outside of the parameters that are set before the town. So that's my concern, primary concern, is how do we enforce, it's good to come up with usage. How do we enforce the things that we decide upon? The second concern I have is it's going to change. The future's ahead of us, and the usage needs are going to change, and we're going to want to use the field differently, which is understandable. Who's going to make those decisions? This decision has to come before a town board, it's going to go before a town meeting, and the folks of Hingham are going to get the vote on it. I guess my question is, who will make that decision in the future? Will the school committee simply say, well, we decide that? Or, I mean, I guess that's my question, who will make future usage changes, decisions, if in fact it gets built, three years from now, they decide, well, you know, we want to add these groups? What board in the town will address those issues and what kind of input will neighbors have at that time? So that would be my question.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Dennis Kelly, 63 Pleasant Street. I'm a neighbor. And just a couple of quick points. First, I attended many of the ad hoc committee meetings, and my feeling is that, that committee really bent over backwards to accommodate a lot of opinions and a lot of different perspectives. And so I think that we all, we definitely owe them a lot of gratitude, and there was a tremendous amount of work put in. And a lot of it's being rehashed here tonight, which is fine and understandable, but this is a group of people that really put a tremendous amount of time in it and were very inclusive. Secondly, many neighbors are primarily worried about parking. Sports is not an issue for parking around the high school. The neighborhood is mostly impacted by town meeting, by elections, and the lack of enforcement of the parking rules that exist. And the fact that we're going to get additional parking as a part of this proposal is a huge win for hundreds of people in the area. It's not just a few people being impacted. This is a major win for the neighborhood. And the vast majority, the 87 percent of the neighbors, are concerned about parking and are concerned about traffic and enforcement. And so the fact that this will help alleviate some of the parking issues is a, is a, like I said, a big win.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to add to this conversation? Sure.
Chris Falvey, 12 Isaac Sprague Drive. As a mother of two high school daughters who are both athletes, I'm actually not here to talk about the high school athletes, but the youth sports. I was actually involved in soliciting all the youth presidents and asking them to really be thoughtful in what they really wanted out of this new field complex. And I have to say, those youth presidents were amazing. They really are most concerned with the high school athletes and letting our high school athletes get the most access out of this field. And all they're looking for is just a few times to let some of the older kids, not the younger kids, they were mostly all focused on like their 7th and 8th graders, giving them an opportunity to play on that turf field. So as the planning board, you know, considers the number of nighttime events that are going to happen at that, at the main field, I really want you to think about those youth sports. They were so unselfish and so, they were so, they were not greedy. They were thoughtful, is the only word I can really describe, to talk about those youth presidents. And one youth president in particular, and not to call you out, Judy, but he, he talked about the kids that never get a chance to play in a varsity sport at our high school. You made the comment earlier in the meeting that, you know, everyone gets to high school and they get to play in the field and under the lights and get their name called out. Well, that's not true. Some of our kids will never get picked to be a varsity lacrosse player or a soccer player, and this is their chance to have one or two nights for an entire season to have that opportunity. So I really, I, I know we're going to do right for the high school kids, because the neighbors are on board with it, but let's do right for our youth sports too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Sean Platt, 55 Pleasant Street, so I'm a neighbor. I just wanted to agree with Mr. Chamberlain that I'm on board. I love sports. My four kids in Hingham. But there's anecdotal part to this, because when they remodeled the high school and they left the lights on all night in the parking lot, the kids go there and they hang out, because it's lit. So any night that the lights are on, there's a little screeing around the neighborhood, and that'll be true every night that there's whatever's going on in the fields. So I do hope there will be some, I hate to say enforcement, but some, somebody regulating that. And I also hope that when the lights are not on, they're off. That if they're not being used, they get turned off. I mean, I, I don't know why they're on all night in the parking lot, and I don't know what causes to run those lights, but if we don't need them, turn them off.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to talk about the use policy? Oh, Chief, I just saw you over there. I was looking for you over here. It was just nice to see you back there. Okay, so on the use policy, I think we, we understand what you're doing. I think you understand what we're trying to get to. I think as far as the non, and I would ask anybody here to sort of chime in on the sort of summary of what we did. I think that we need to, sort of the outside numbers, like, so not the possibility of every Friday night until 10 o'clock, but how many? And it would be nice to see a limited number of the Hingham youth games, particularly the ones with no PA, because I think turf is lovely and that's a great experience, but having, I know that the only one that actually uses the PA system in the youth is the football, and we already understand what the maximum number of games for football is. So, you know, my, it would be great if some of those times would get earlier, but I have to leave that up to you to, to come up with your best effort at our next hearing. And so what we'll try, if you can send that to us early this week, because we're going to meet again on the 14th, which is again next Monday. So the earlier you can get it out there, the better. Then we can... Yep. Okay, does anybody have any questions that we haven't addressed on the use that they should be talking about? No? Okay, so the next thing we're going to talk about is the traffic and parking. Does anybody want to take a five-minute, like glass of water, break? I don't, well... I know, I thought we did already. Okay, Sarah, she was right there. Oh, so we, we're going to wait one more minute. I apologize, but I thought we were ready. We did receive, the next portion of our evening is the Hingham High School Parking and Traffic Plan for Large Events. And the police department is here. You guys, Carol, you'll make a presentation first, or?
Sure.
I think you've made it before.
Yeah.
Yeah. We, we do have a letter dated January 2nd from the Nass associates, which we just received tonight at our, do you have it, Gary? It's just in the package of paper that you got tonight? That... That says they are in agreement that the elements of the traffic and parking management plan offer the necessary framework to effectively manage traffic and parking demands during large event conditions at the high school campus. We would recommend that the plan be revisited on an annual or more frequent basis as may be necessary to update and refine the elements of the management plan to reflect physical changes to the roadway network, parking and circulation, and to address observations and feedback received. So this is our traffic engineer, the town's traffic engineer analyzing the school committee's plan, the school committee and the police department's plan, and saying that he's in agreement and that there should be simply an annual review. So I guess, do you guys have an overview that you want to give us or do you want us to just ask you questions?
I think in my direction, I could just basically go through the plan with you for the benefit of everybody else that's still here. The goal is to execute safe and efficient parking and in traffic in an effort to ensure the safety of the children, the local school community, the neighbors, and event attendees, and the safety of the general public traveling on the affected roadways. It's also to create efficient flow of traffic and minimize traffic impact on the surrounding neighborhoods. And scheduling events will take into the account the transition of attendees. So in other words, we won't schedule things back to back. Gave an example of typical large events, town meeting, I think we've heard of tonight, fall open house, seasonal sports nights, high school night football games, election, all-town band concert, graduation, and miscellaneous auditorium events. We coordinated with the police department in regard to determining staffing requirements for town events. The town assumes financial responsibility for the required officers for school events, school department does. Night football games will require six to eight football, police officers, the number to be determined by the athletic director and the Hingham Police Department on a game-by-game basis. Town meetings and events larger than twenty-five hundred anticipated, attendees may require additional off-site parking, either at Baptist, the Baptist Church or Haley Field with a shuttle service provided. And that will be a joint effort, again, among police department and school administration. We talked about communication efforts in this plan. If it's a high school event, we will utilize our listserv as well as the high school website to inform everybody about the parking options. And then if it's a community event, we would utilize all the high school options as well as any of the towns in the Hingham Journal. And then we just talked about the sequence of parking and how the main lot would be utilized first with police officers directing people, the far lot second, and then the overflow lot third. We talked about the dispersion of an event that police officers will be posted at major intersections to direct people as needed. In the notes section, we noted that illegal parking in fire lanes may result in towing. The fire department has the authority to tow vehicles and that the building usage form will include information for anybody who's renting any of our fields in regard to the police details that will be required.
Okay.
And I was thankful for Jeff Dirk's comments and thankful for the police working with us on the plan.
And I'm going to let everybody answer questions, but I think the biggest question that I've heard in other contexts that goes to this parking and traffic plan that maybe you could talk about is, and we touched on briefly already, is just the number of seats. Because typically when you, when we do parking analysis for any of our projects, restaurants, anything, we talk first about the number of seats and we use that as the driver of the number of cars. This project, we, earlier you said that you didn't know how many seats we currently have on the site, but I'm sure somebody knows how many we have.
Twelve hundred.
So right now, there's twelve hundred seats in all, in the main and in the facing?
I'm sorry?
In the main grandstand and in the visitors together?
No, that's the main grandstand.
Okay. And how many in the visitors? Do you know?
Yeah, I don't know.
Like what, like, like a quarter of the size?
Three or four hundred.
Okay. So let's just say three fifty. So now the main one is going to sixteen hundred and the visitor will be how many?
Two thirty-seven.
Two thirty-seven.
In the visitor, plus there'll be an additional one that faces the track. That's going to be how many?
Three eighty-seven.
Three eighty-seven. But the track one wouldn't be used really concurrently with the other two?
No.
No, you wouldn't have an event, like a big game that used all the stadium and then something?
That goes to the building, you know, that, the usage, you know, the building coordinating and barbed wire and the central office stuff. We wouldn't have two large events going.
So we're going from like sixteen hundred to eighteen hundred seats, basically?
Right.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I need to be, I need to amend my comment. We actually did measure, this is the report that we rendered, there are sixteen hundred seats in the existing grandstand. That's, that's an image and that's the count.
So there's sixteen hundred today?
Yes.
And sixteen hundred in the future?
Right.
Is that correct?
That's correct. And we also measured the visitors and there's four hundred and forty existing? Yes.
So forty existing and then you're going to two thirty-seven plus three eighty-seven. So you're not counting on a lot of visitors, basically?
No.
Or that they want to sit on that side of the stadium?
Possible.
Okay. So the change, basically, is about a hundred seats in total?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we understand that really the size of the number of seats is pretty much the same, except for that additional number for the kind that faces the track. But for any single event, there's still the same number of seats, give or take a little.
Right.
Okay. That was my other question. Does anybody else have questions about how they're?
I had a couple of questions, if I could. I reread the Call and Call and Tonya Traffic Study in follow-up to some of the commentary I got from one of my earlier memos to the consultants. And there are a couple of points in the study that I just wanted to talk about or ask or clarify, because the study said something a little bit differently than I understood at our last meeting. I just want to make sure that we're on the same page. There are a couple of points made in the CNC Traffic Study, and this was, I'm going back to the December sixteenth, two thousand and eleven study. One was that any increase in traffic volumes at the high school is dependent on any change in use of the field, such as increased games, practices, or special events. And typically, they were saying that in their assessment, the increased usage of the fields in the evenings due to the installation of permanent lighting is most likely to impact traffic volumes at the site. So the question, they made the point that traffic conditions similar to those experienced during the Veterans Day night game, with over seven hundred vehicles entering and exiting at the site, may occur more frequently. So the first question I have is, relative to the existing usage and the proposed usage, relative to reconciliation with that statement by the traffic engineers, are we having an increase in frequency of events of that scale or very close to that scale? And the reason that that's of interest and concern is the issue of the spill of cars. Because in looking at that study, they further said that at that type of a scaled event of seven hundred cars, basically, the demand, the overall parking demand exceeded the capacity by two hundred and fifty-eight spaces, which is about sixty percent. And so that's reasonable, given in terms of the number, that's an accurate number, given how many parking spaces currently exist on that site without any, you know, further inclusion. So what I'm trying to get to is also, within that equation, a hundred and ninety cars were parked on the fields during the peak demand at the football game. So the question is, that volume requires an active police traffic flow management plan, which then siphons the cars to the available parking spaces and then to the overflow on the football field, the grass.
Right.
Parking spaces. But what, even with all of that, with that scale of use, there was still off the site of, I don't know, a hundred and something cars off the site. And those cars can only go along Pleasant Street, Union Street. So I'm thinking of this.
Right. So we didn't have a park, so going back to the Veterans Day, I think shot herself in the foot with that game. We don't anticipate holding events like that all the time.
Okay.
Okay? So that was a one-time, it was a one-night game in Hingham for the year. And we invited the veterans and all their families. So that was an unusual event. We do not anticipate, and that's why I showed the average attendance at night football games. We would, and if we needed to use the over, the spill parking lot, have a janitor on-site, Margaret coordinated it that night, that would open that site up and help the policemen flag everybody in. So there is a plan for that. We have accounted for that.
If we had an activity level, and I'm going back to the comments earlier, of four hundred and fifty, I'm trying to get, again, get a sense of, what's the threshold point that cannot be accommodated within the confines of a high school site that would put cars on the neighboring streets?
I think we said, so I think we said in the, in the report that anything where we expected, I think, was it twenty-five hundred or two thousand? That we would look at using Haley Field and the Baptist Church and shuttling people, which we do at town meeting.
So then the?
So that's the threshold.
So then the occurrence where you have cars on Pleasant Street on the shoulders or on Union Street on the shoulder?
Well, we're hoping the improved, yeah, we're hoping that the improved parking situation would, would really mitigate that situation. Yep.
And we have improved signage that helps.
Good evening. I'm Bill Seymour. I'm the Director of Civil Engineering at Gale Associates, your consultant. A couple of things. First of all, that is an outlier event. That's been pretty clearly determined. As far as off-street parking is concerned, we've done several things to mitigate the incidents of off-street parkings, aside from any enforcement things that the town may do. First of all, we have proposed a granite curb along Union Street that will limit the ability for off-street parking. We've placed, I think the number is six, but it's somewhere around six, additional no parking signs, new signs. We've created a hundred and three new spaces. You are correct that in that outlier event, the number of cars that couldn't be accommodated by the overflow plan was about a hundred. We now have permanent parking spaces to accommodate about that number, a hundred and three. We've created a lighted thoroughfare from the southern parking lot that's been reconstructed and expanded by about a hundred spaces that is ADA accessible, well-defined, well-lighted, with good wayfinding, that will make that southern parking lot much, much more appealing for potential parkers. And it will provide less incentive to park off-street, off-site. And we've also talked to the addition of predominantly accessible parking spaces at the main entrance to the high school primary parking lot. So I think that, one last point that I wanted to make is that there really, there is a more intense use potential for the four or five home football games to be held at the multipurpose rectangular field. Beyond that, I don't think there isn't a change in use. The number of practices, the number of teams is essentially the same. It's perhaps even a bit better in that they are spread out more. Today, where you have concurrent events, because of the ability to use the facility over a longer period of time, within the guidelines, the concurrent events that you may be having today may be sequential. And yes, there's that overlap time, but the condition that exists at that overlap time today exists in parallel times, over a longer period of time. So.
Let me just do a follow-up from Gary's question. In terms of the parking issues and more signs, we got some pictures from a butters that show the no parking sign with the cars right there. And I certainly know that, you know, from coaching, from going to games, that people, despite the fact that there's an open parking lot, they park along the street where no parking is allowed. So how, I mean, it's really problematic on Union Street, the people parking there. I don't think six signs is going to maybe make a difference.
The curb does, though. The curb helps.
But these people drive big SUVs.
SUVs.
A curb isn't going to give them a problem.
You're asking a civil engineer and enforcement question at that point. We can engineer it such that we can make the parking available. We've done that. We can make the parking inviting and provide people incentives to get from point A to point B in an efficient, safe manner. We can provide the requisite signage. We can provide curbs, stops, to limit the ability to park on street. That's what we've done. We've done all four of those things.
Did you change the flow onto the site?
Yes, sir. The other document that I think you have is a letter from Jeff Dirk that's dated January fourth, where he looks at our response to his review comments of the parking design.
January second?
There's a second letter that came out today.
Yep, I have it right here.
He's looked at all of the details that you speak to. Line of sight, turning lane widths, lane geometries, all of the details of the parking lot design itself. There are two comments that he made that we will follow up on. He suggests that we have a sign prior to the crossing of Union Street that says, warning pedestrian crossing. We'll add those two signs, one in each direction. The other thing that he's recommending is a segment of sidewalk in the island between the two access and egress points for the proposed lot. And we'll add that as well. Other than that, he requires no further revisions or has no further comment on all the other aspects that he previously commented on.
Could we ask Chief Perino to talk about enforcement, since you are the expert in the room? Thank you.
Mike Perino, Police Chief. I've heard a lot of talk about that we don't enforce. And I can tell you that we write hundreds of tickets up there a year. Okay? And one of the things that I wrote to this board back in June was the fact that when we do this project, we need to provide enough spaces that, so people don't have to go park in the neighborhoods, park illegally. One of the things that people would say to us is, when we write them a ticket, there's no place to park. Okay? So we want enough parking, so ticketing shouldn't be the answer. As far as a lot of the comments about, you know, people parking, we've seen it tow. And with the curbing, maybe part of the signage will be tow zone. I think if we started towing some cars up there, maybe people would get the message. But I will, just another thing regarding enforcement, the selectmen have a policy where on certain events, there's the town, the parking is waived on Union Street, where people can park on Union Street. Town meeting, graduation, other events also. Okay? So I think the, it's important that we have that lot. And I've, you know, we talked about this, but I really want to enforce, put to the board, I need that lot, where in case there are any events, and I agree totally that that Veterans Day was an anomaly, it probably won't happen again. It will probably happen on graduation day. It could happen on the parent night. All right? These are the nights that we really have overflow parking and they go all over the place up there. So if we have a place to put the cars, then if people get tagged, it's their own problem. Or people get towed, it's their own problem. Okay? Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
We have one more question. Do you see anything else that could be done in terms of management that could, would keep people off the streets, other than the curbing and the, you know, maybe adding to the signs?
I think signage is a big thing. On, you know, when, when the event is filling up, have an ability to put us off, stay a lot full, you know? And direct people, like for instance, with people coming out of town, they don't know where to go. If we have signage available, I mean, I was even thinking of a message board, you know, for these big events, telling people where they can park.
So right now, if the sign doesn't say tow zone, can you not tow or?
Well, you don't like to, you don't want to be towing our residents. You know, those hundreds of tickets that we write, people call, you know, they complain, nobody likes to get a ticket. And. likes to get a ticket, and, uh, you know, we're writing up our residents.
Soccer game.
You know, so, um, you know, we've actually had some people that didn't want to move their car, give me the ticket, you know, so.
Wow.
Yeah.
That was Gary.
I will say, though, in the last four or five years, the Union Street Saturday soccer situation has gotten a lot better, because there has been a lot of enforcement up there on the.
Yeah, we've been working, we've worked with the school committee, the school department, we've worked with the sports partnership, we really did a lot this year. We've got the sawhorses out there.
Right, right.
That's why it shows that the curbing might work.
I know, so you're hearing all the bad stuff, but I see.
Right.
And also the back-to-school night in September, that amplifier, every time they would change the classes, they would say, "And if you have a car, go move it," you know, because they're.
And that, that's part of the thing is.
So it's really.
Part of the thing is my, my officers are compassionate, and a lot of times, they, they'll go in and make an announcement to move your car instead of tagging somebody, you know, so.
I feel the.
I'm glad the compassion.
We feel for you. Yes.
I just want to make a note, and I'm sure Paul can speak to this as well from his years on the Traffic Committee, to the extent that the board is considering either referencing incorporating this plan, or any other conditions that relate directly to the public ways, as opposed to the parking on the site, you do need to condition it that it's subject to the final approval of the Board of Selectmen, because only the Board of Selectmen can make regulations with respect to the public ways. So, a condition in the permit is all great and good, but if it hasn't been voted or approved by the Board of Selectmen, it won't be enforceable.
So you're talking, Susan, about signs?
I'm talking about signs and any saying.
The curbing?
When you can or can't, no, well, that's going to be done in, you know, the curbing, I think, just has to be done in conjunction with DPW.
Okay.
Um, but the actual signage and whether or not people can or can't park on different public ways at any time, different times, that's, all has to be voted by the Board of Selectmen ultimately, so that's the caveat to any public way regu- parking regulations.
And I, I don't know who has the conversation with the selectmen, but what you just said about the selectmen waiving, um, Union Street no parking for town meetings, for example, that would just be a good thing to let people know, so that people who are affected by that, who live on Union Street, know, you know it? Oh, okay, because I had no idea.
There's, there's a few dates. There is a Board of Selectmen, uh, polit- rules and poli- I'm getting the name wrong. Rules and policies, no, Policies and Guidelines Manual, I'm sorry, I'm butchering the name. Um, I spoke to the Assistant Town Administrator, um, hopefully, it, right now, I don't believe it's on the website, but I, I told her that I didn't believe that this board was aware of the manual, so we're going to try to get it more publicly distributed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Um, Bill, do you have any questions?
No questions on this issue.
Paul?
None.
Nor do I, so, I asked you. Can you ask yours? Sir, we're opening it up to the public, and you're the first.
Thank you. Peter Victor, sixty-five LaZelle Street. I disagree with the fact that some, somebody said that that traffic has improved on Union Street, for somebody that drives by there ten, fifteen times a day, especially on the weekends, the only time it improved was late this fall, when, um, Chief Perino came down with, with a detail. That was the only improvement I saw, the sawhorses later, but still people seem to park in between the sawhorses, or they live park and think that there's nothing wrong with that. They're putting their own kids at risk. Like I've told you before, I've almost seen kids hit by cars a few times down there, so I think something other than just pacifying this parking situation's going to be done, you really have to look at that. And, go ahead.
I, I'm just wondering if Hingham used soccer, is here, have they considered putting, uh, just a crossing guard on Saturdays at that, um, at that crosswalk?
I think you need at least that, and someone to control the parking to keep it off the street.
Well, would you agree, based on your lengthy service on the planning board, that the granite curbing is a good idea?
No, that was my next point. Because LaZelle Street's a scenic road, Paul. I'm sensitive to that.
I know you are.
I brought, I brought that before town meeting in nineteen seventy-eight.
Is Union?
LaZelle Street and Union Street were the first scenic roads in this town, and many others have followed. And to put granite curbing on a scenic road is insensitive and inappropriate, I think.
Even in the face of public safety?
I think public safety, you, you'd, that it'd be more effective to have a police detail down there.
You're saying for the whole, from Middle Street all the way up, or are you saying from where the field started?
My experience has been from, from the river to just past the parking lot.
The bridge?
The bridge.
Yeah.
Covered bridge just past the parking lot. That's where the problem is.
Is the granite curbing proposed for that part?
I don't know, I haven't seen the details for the granite curbing.
How far does the granite curbing go, do you know?
It's about eight hundred feet. It goes all the way from, pretty much from the covered bridge, all the way up to the existing parking lot.
Back to the existing parking lot?
Back to the existing parking lot.
Not from the school.
Or the transformer side?
To me, the granite curbing's an urban solution, and it doesn't belong on Union Street. That's my personal opinion.
And I'm not sure it's going to stop, I don't think it'll stop people either who.
I don't think it necessarily will either.
Do you have a drawing of where the granite curbing is going? Thank you.
The other problem I see down there is, um, it's the changeover when the, when these games, um, you know, lap over one another. So you have, you have the people coming, delivering kids, and the people leaving, trying to pick their kids up. So, that parking lot I've seen many Saturdays full, and nowhere for people to park. So, maybe the, the additional parking will help, but my concern is that with the other activities that were mentioned in the other half of your presentation, filling those parking spots, you're going to end up with the same situation. So really, I think you have to look at all the activity in a whole that's going to happen down there, before you can decide what to do.
But isn't that a function of the, of the school committee scheduling events effectively?
Absolutely, Paul.
So that doesn't happen?
Yeah, and the worst times I've seen are, and I don't think it was mentioned, SATs that happen for, I don't know, four or five times a year. That's a problem. Elections, Saturdays on, on Election Day, um, and all the, uh, activity, school activities that you guys have mentioned.
Because they're overlapping big events.
They're overlapping big, big events. So, yeah, I, I, I think, I think some heady scheduling by the school department, with all these activities going on there, would certainly help, and not schedule them at the same time. I don't know what you do with the youth soccer, though.
When you see that parking lot full on Saturday, is the parking lot in front of the high school full too?
Sometimes.
Sometimes.
Yeah, sometimes they'll have, uh, uh, activities there.
At the same time.
Usually it's not, because people don't want to walk that far.
Right, yeah.
But many times, that, that back parking lot is full, and, and there's a big problem down there.
And I think what you're talking about now goes to, um, back to this, how are we going to enforce this, how are we going to see whether it's working, revisit it, and so we'll get to that part, I think, in a minute, but let's go back to the curbing.
Well, it, it, Chief, are you aware, one way or the other, whether there's been any kind of accident experience down at that particular parking lot exit or entrance to date? I haven't heard anything.
Did you have a car accident?
Yeah.
No.
No pedestrian accidents?
There was a, not recently, four years ago. We had one, I want to say about ten, twelve years ago.
Okay.
Well, we need is one awful one.
I think that the big concern down there with me anyways, is the kids darting in and out of traffic.
Sure.
So, if you can eliminate the, you have to go slowly.
Yeah.
But if you can eliminate the, the parking, the live parking, especially now, because people don't believe that they're.
Are violating the.
Violating law, and, and they are, and usually it's their own kids.
Well, if it's really cold and you want to watch the game, and you don't want to get out of your car.
Exactly.
What else are you going to do?
Anyway, all I'm saying to you people is, you've got to look at that and see, see how that is going to be part of the solution to the parking and the traffic.
Can we go to the granite curbs for a second?
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to see what the.
So the granite curb we're proposing runs down here from around where the covered bridge is now, on the west side of the road, all the way up, it kind of curves in around the proposed, uh, parking lot egresses, and then runs along the west side of Union Street all the way up to approximately right there.
And there is none in any of those locations now?
There is no curb there now.
And what about on the other side of the street?
We're not proposing anything, and there is no curb there on the existing.
Curbs can be.
Will the planting of, um, street trees along there prevent the parking, to slow the cars down?
Not in my experience, no. Trees do not stop anybody.
Granite curb does, though, that's the.
Is there a problem you guys live on?
What about a stone wall? As opposed to granite curbing, that would stop people from parking there.
You'd have to have an offset, I believe. Might people have stolen walls and set back ten, eleven feet?
Right, you can't put a wall in the right way.
Start tree right away?
Can't put a wall in the right way.
We, we made them, we, we made the, develop or remove the ornamental wall in the declared subdivision roadway.
Well, I.
Right?
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah.
Is there a problem with parking from that far lot down to the, uh, to the main lot on the west side?
Not usually.
In one of those houses?
No.
I've never seen, yeah? I've never seen cars.
No, you're right, it's. You know, we see that, Judy, is, uh, when they have girls' soccer games in the afternoon, but that really doesn't get into the, um, into the, the problem area, which is from the parking lot down to the bridge.
But I thought between the main lot and the far lot on the field side of the street, that's where, at town meeting and everything, everybody pulls up. So why are we putting the granite curbing on the opposite side of the street?
That is the west side, there is.
Oh, the west side is the field side? Oh, okay.
It's this side, yes.
Won't the problem go away, though, to a certain degree, Peter, if there's an increased parking lot? I mean, we're talking.
I don't know, Paul, you know, maybe.
Okay, I'm going to let some other people, but thank you.
Thank you.
Good topics. Yes, Mr. Rockoff.
Beth Rockoff, thirty-six Pleasant. We sent in a packet to you which showed a lot of problems with parking, and I don't think, without providing a detail cop, that it would be, there's any way it's going to be changed, because right now, there are many times and occasions where the second lot is totally empty, and they have parked across the sidewalks, they've parked all in the started street on both sides of the road, they've parked in Fontainebleau in front of the no-parking signs, and nobody's, you know, following the rules. So by adding more parking spaces and by putting in curbing, right now, there's, you know, a big buffer, there's a sidewalk, and people in front of the high school parking lot, they park across the sidewalk, up on the grass, there was a photo there that showed it. It can be for a sporting event, whether it be for a Thanksgiving football game, the second lot was totally empty, whether it was for the Marymount, um, sale, for Christmas sale that they rented it out, whether it be a dance recital, they're there. The other problem is, almost every afternoon, they're parked all over Pleasant and Union Street waiting for kids to come out. Now, they're live parking, but they're parked illegally, there are plenty of times when our youth are putting on a track meet, they've put cones to prevent, you know, traffic problems and for their safety, and yet people violate it, they come both ways, up and down that parking, between the cafeteria parking and the Pleasant Street parking, somebody's going to get killed. There's been many times where you hear screeching of brakes or somebody worried, and unless there's some kind of enforcement issue where somebody's hired to police it, it does no good, because the parking spots are there.
You're the traffic man.
Well, I, I think it's unrealistic to expect a police detail down there in perpetuity. I just don't, I mean, it, I hadn't really thought of that scenic road issue quite clearly, as you have, Peter, but I, I, I really need to look at that hard before I said no to granite curbing, because I think that's a good fix for this. That's going to discourage traffic and parking on the side of the roadway, and, and channel them into the parking lot, which is what the design is calculated to do. I mean, that, that's what we want here.
I just don't, I, I see people jumping over there.
If you have enough enforcement down there, and people know they're going to get ticketed or towed, now that would do it. I know they complain and they.
They're being tagged now. You just heard the chief say, they, they issued eight hundred tickets there last year.
I've been there calling a hundred times.
But they, but the point is, they're issuing the tickets and it's not working.
Okay, we're going to let somebody else make some comments. Yes, sir.
Hi, Steve Oliver, nineteen Pleasant Street. You started the conversation with what the seating is, is it the same? I think we decided it was like a hundred more. Uh, I guess my question would be, not just seating, what's the capacity? Because if you can come and stand, more people will come. If you're going to put a great field in with great facilities, you want more people to come. So to me, the question starts, what's the capacity of the field? Then you could see what the cars and, um, because my personal opinion is that, great idea, but fit into the wrong space. Can the infrastructure of that community handle, not only the parking, but the traffic? If you add lights at night, you get people coming, more from out of town, less familiar, and less visibility. You know, where I live, they come off of two-twenty-eight going fast, just, and you've got stop signs to get rid of people, you're just, it's, how does the infrastructure fit with, it's kind of this, I'm not sure I know your name, Gary. You know, reading about that study with, how do all these cars get in and out, and how well does it work? If we find a way that it works well, then the idea works, if not, we're putting too much on the infrastructure that's currently there. I guess that's my concern. Thanks.
Yes.
Rich Chamberlain, still at the twenty-two Union Street. I've expressed it before, and that my concern isn't so much the sports parking, although I think that will increase. My concern is, right now, existing just the way it is, is insufficient parking for the high school auditorium and the events that go on in the evening, on numerous occasions throughout the year. And my, my apologies to the police force that I threw under the bus, but I have called many, many times, and many, many times they've refused. I've gone out and spoken to the officers, and we ticket these cars, and they wouldn't ticket the cars. I went to one wonderful female officer and explained to her I needed her to ticket the cars, so I would be able to show that there's a parking problem, at which point she did actually give tickets, but I understand, they don't want to ticket nice Hingham people who are at some event in the auditorium. My point is, if there's already insufficient parking, there's a, there's a parking problem in front of my house, a lot of the time. The curbing goes eighty feet short, I wish we could bring the curbing up to the, but anyway. If we already have an insufficient parking situation, we're going to build a facility that's going to increase the need for parking, are we adding enough additional space? I mean, if we added a hundred spaces now, would it take care of the existing parking without adding the field? If we add the field, I think, uh, anyway, that's, there's too many people parking now, there's not enough spaces, in the evening, if you add another evening thing. Anyway.
Want to ask questions?
Yes, please.
Warren Pelissero, one forty-seven Main Street. I do want to address the, um, the parking and the, specifically the, the issue that sports brings to parking. Um, I think what we've talked about is having three high school night games there per year, which would be the only time that there would be a point of overflow due to sports. You have graduation, you've got town meeting, you've got at least three recitals that happen every year. There are already existing twice as many events than the sports that we're talking about, and by the way, the, um, the town meeting, the special town meeting that we had, um, that brought us here, that brought the eighty-seven percent here in the first place, outnumbered the amount of, uh, cars that were at that, um, that event that we did have, which was, was our night event. So that should be looked at, and not that night event, for the maximum number, and we should probably start to refer to that as the, the maximum number of cars that, that were presented to us. It was not at all a sports event, it would, happened to be our own town meeting, a special town meeting, where we had over twenty-two hundred at the town meeting. Um, so I think it's important to, to differentiate what, what it is that we're doing, we're trying to correct a, an existing problem, and we're all trying to do so for the common good. Um, and I think that we've made tremendous steps in trying to do so by increasing the amount of. And I think that we've made tremendous steps in trying to do so by increasing the amount of parking space by, and as you said, Judy, without, you know, are we, are we putting too many spots in there? Are we overdoing this? And as a matter of fact, the Co- and Coantonio study actually pointed us to, you shouldn't be doing anything. That, that was their end item result. You shouldn't do anything. You shouldn't really plan for those, those extraordinary events. But we're trying to meet what the, the parking safety needs are, as the chief has explained, because it's always been a thorn in, in the police department's thigh, side for many, many years. And we've not been able to address this properly. We're trying to come up with, with solutions that, that do work. You know, we were able to come forward to address specifically, as Mr. Bickford mentioned, soccer for a number of weekends in a row, to try to take care of that situation and then followed that up with, uh, actually placing saw horses, um, out on either side of the road. That seemed to mitigate some of the parking issues. I think, you know, as we start to get more signage, as we start to get curbing, um, and as we, in, and, uh, Mr. Healy, I, I do think that, uh, the scenic road has to do with the trees and the road itself. That is defined as the scenic road.
And the stone wall.
In the walls, that's correct, in the walls. So I, I think that, that we, we can, um, take a look and, and find out if a, a granite curbing is gonna do us some good. Again, all we're looking to do is to make sure that, that, um, we take this event of, of repurposing the fields in improving our public safety.
Can I ask you a question, though? To me, not having to do with this permitting of this multipurpose field, but to me, there's just too much Hingham youth soccer going on at that Union Street field on a Saturday. It's just, the intensity is too high. There's too many cars, too many people from out of town, all at the same time. The games are nine to ten, ten to eleven. There's no twenty minutes between the games. But here we are, trying to put in granite curbing, do all of this, and we're not able to go to Hingham youth soccer and say, "How about using a different field somewhere else for one of those games? How about spacing the games a little bit more?" And I think this is kind of a test, and I don't mean to put you on the spot about that particularly, but it just, I spent a lot of years doing the Hingham youth soccer thing, so I experienced that a lot. But this is, this is the type of thing that, that I think where we're headed is to say, okay, let's go ahead with this multipurpose field, with this use, and then come back in six months and say, "Is it working? Is the volume right? You know, what's working, what's not?" With the Hingham youth soccer, I might be wrong, because I haven't been there in a couple of years now, but it wasn't working when I was there. But there was no way to go back to the Hingham youth soccer and say, "There's like one team too many or one field too many on that space right now."
Well, I'm not with Hingham youth soccer, so I, I can't really speak...
Right, I'm just saying, how would you go back?
But, but I can, let me, let me just address the issues. Let me just address the, the issues. That, um, a, as you know, and I'm glad that you brought this up, because, um, Hingham youth soccer has lost the complete use of East School. There were ten fields at East School. They're gone. They're wiped out. So they no longer have East School. We've lost middle school. We don't have the middle school fields that you could rely on. We've added a little bit at Carlson, but, uh, overall, the aggregate, we've lost fields. We've lost the numbers of fields. So to ask them to move somewhere else, I, it's just not, it's just not realistic. What, what I do think that they're very, very willing and able to do is to talk about that. They have increased the time in the spacing between their games. So there are twenty minutes between games, so there's a turnover and transition that's already happening. In addition to that, I think that the additional parking that is in the far parking lot will help them. They've also included a, uh, an enforcement and reinforcement to all the towns that they're playing, which they'd never done until they, we did this this year with the chief's help. We put language in to all the other towns that are coming in that both, uh, addressed how to get to the fields as well as where to park and when they got there. So that was included in there, and also where not to park. So that, that for the first time has, was included in soccer. So soccer, I think, is very willing and malleable to work with us, um, to, to overcome those issues. And I do think that, that we've made a major step this year in the offseason without even adding new parking to mitigate those issues. So I think we, we've made tremendous steps and tremendous strides there.
Good, I mean, that's, that's the answer that I was...
Good.
I'd like to just add that, um, we lost a lot of fields to Marymount, which is now Brandon Woods. And the, the field options are shrinking. And, I mean, you know, we, we found out what happened up at Wood Street and...
We got a new field on Wood Street, didn't we?
We did. We did.
And by the way, those, those fields, we've been asked to rest.
Right.
Because there's so much play on them, we've been asked to rest, just as we've been asked to rest Lynch Field. And...
And the high school.
And the high school field. We can't. We have no place to put the traffic. So it is, you know, I guess, talking about the entire project just for a second, I, I think that, that there's, there's a need to take a look at this as, as its own project here, but also in the entirety. You know, what we're, what we're looking at is optimizing the dollars that are being spent on this project so that we take care of the, the number of needs that are in the town. So I think that the, the fact that we're looking to, to have two sets of youth football games at, at these fields at night and to have two youth lacrosse games and to have two youth soccer games, it helps us in the mitigation of what we're trying to do elsewhere. We're trying to get them off of where they are and onto somewhere else, and it's very, very difficult to do right now. We can't use the fields. And having the Michelson Field even available, um, and Margaret will tell you this, um, it's a grass field. That grass field has to be protected for football. And we're not allowed to use that, although it may be available, we're not to, allowed to use that in inclement weather, in the fall, or the potential of inclement weather. So oftentimes, we'll have youth football games scheduled at the Michelson Field that are canceled because of the prospect of rain. So we've got to preserve it for the high school use. So, um, Tom, how many home football games have you played at?
We've played six over the last three years out of twenty-four possible dates. And Hingham youth football has cost them fourteen thousand dollars to play games at O'Haston High School, Hanover High, Wayman High, Archbishop Williams High School, and Fair Academy. Those are home games.
So though, that's kind of what we're dealing with as, as far as fields in the town and in the entirety. So, uh, again, what we're trying to do is, we're, we're trying to make sure that we optimize this project in every sense of the word, in both the field use as well as safety issues that, that we can take care of that are not on the backs of sports teams, that are on, you know, the public safety of our town and our citizens.
Thank you. That's helpful. Thank you. Yes.
As an operator, it's upsetting to listen to the loss of fields and the need for this excess without asking you, as the planning board, to please address the issue of practices now, if it's not just games, and the effect of the fact that the turf field multiplies the usage allowed, which grass fields are prohibiting. What is that impact going to be on our neighborhood?
If the game, I, I thought I heard it expressed or represented that the number of games weren't going to increase.
The games, but what about the practices?
And presumably, practices will probably be in a similar vein. But the reality is, where are they gonna play if the fields are rendered unusable because of overuse? I, I don't know. I don't know where, where it's going.
Paul, I heard that the only games they have scheduled don't increase. But with, without a limitation on those number of nights they can use, there can be five games a week on those fields at night, unless some other plan has come up with, because the current plan is not, not allowed for that. It could be somebody else.
That's not what has been represented. It's gonna happen.
If they've asked about two or three games on the field per season, and the high school season takes the same, how, how would we get five games a night?
Some, another group coming in, I mean, they're not limiting that.
No, but we're gonna get, we're gonna get outside numbers from the school committee.
But they, they did not, they were not willing to say, "No, we're not planning to not use those, that field other, other nights."
But I think that's changed, right?
You mean for practice?
No, not just for practice, for games too, just not for Hingham High School games.
I thought that chart was two, like, Hingham football was questioning two or three games.
For, for just Hingham High School games. There could be other games that come in, there are other teams, whether it's a, you know...
Non-Hingham, non-Hingham teams?
Yeah, sure, you know, travel team.
I don't think that's in the plan.
I don't think I heard that, sir.
Well, I did not hear any limitation on that, and I'd love to. I did not hear that.
Could you just say that there will be...
So we're gonna, well, we're gonna restate that for you, so it's pretty clear. But Margaret asked for three home night games per team, and the he, the youth sports asked for, you know, two to three, so.
So then, but when I asked you, is that the only use it'll be on there, I, I'm just, I, I look forward to this chart, because I really, I don't have my head around this now, and you haven't, you haven't appeased that fear of mine.
Okay.
Chris Falvey.
Shouldn't be at this point. Shouldn't be at this point. We should have it now.
Just, Chris Falvey, twelve Isaac Spray Drive. Just on the question of practice, because I thought that, I thought that's what I just had heard Beth say about the number of practices, and I think that's what you keep talking about, Sarah?
No, I'm talking about, about, uh...
Practices at night.
I could be talking about other games.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm gonna address practices, because like, like Ben, I also attended a good percentage of the ad hoc meetings for the last eighteen months. And the thing that I heard loud and clear, over and over and over again from the two members of that ad hoc committee who are abutters, they said that practices at night were not the problem. They said, "It's a, it's a nice noise." They did not mind practices at night.
Can I explain to you what Ms. Rockoff said, though? I don't think she said whether it's practices at night. It's that when you, when you have a turf field...
Right, you're gonna have more.
And it rains really hard, you can still practice.
Correct.
Right now, the grass is kind of acting as a, a volume weeder.
I get it. Yep.
Kind of speak, and, and is that right? Is that what you said? And the turf is now gonna just allow for constant use on the field rather than kind of going...
But I think, isn't, I thought what I saw, period, Judy, the policy of the school committee is that they said that the, the, the main field could be used until eight-thirty at night for practice. I'm not talking about games. I know there's gonna be a limitation on the number of P A, but...
No, I don't think she was speaking to what was up here. I think it was just a general comment that right now, there's a sort of a coming and going of practices with the weather.
Correct. But I think the point that I'm trying, the point I'm trying to make is that if we're gonna build a turf field, why wouldn't we allow nighttime use of that field until eight-thirty at night? When, when the ad hoc committee, they talked about this a long time.
I don't think, I think you're bringing something up that nobody's arguing.
All right, so then I get, I, I, I think, I, I, yeah, I, I think what I heard...
Do we want it used five nights a week?
Yeah, that's what Sarah's been saying. She's been saying she doesn't want the field to be used.
You were talking about dames.
I'm talking about, well, any P A system and...
P A system is what you're talking about.
Okay, so you're just talking about P A system, Sarah, because that didn't sound like what you were saying earlier when I wrote it down.
Yeah, I'm primarily talking about P A system, but I'd love to hear from, from, uh, Ben, maybe, who, who represents us.
Or maybe Tim can also talk about it.
Wait, before we go back to the youth policy, because we've already kind of...
We're gonna have to get the gavel out here.
Moved on from the youth policy. I don't wanna, I don't wanna hear from anybody on the youth po, the youth policy until we finish our conversation on traffic and parking. So does anybody else have something to say about traffic and parking? Yes, please.
Stephen Mildrum, Manatee Road. I'm here to defend the police department. I borrowed my, I borrowed my father-in-law's car to go to the homecoming football game. Went through the main, I came down through Wampa, ducked up that way, saw all the saw horses, dropped my free boys off at the main gate, coming out of the parking lot, I saw cars parked up on the curb. Well, there was no curb, so I saw them parked up on the, on the hill, whatever. Car pulled out, and I said, "Beautiful, this is my day." Tucked, tucked my father-in-law's car right in there, walked into the game. I came out to a nice twenty-five dollar citation surprise.
Sorry, sorry.
Not a problem. Lesson learned. Lesson learned. But I will say, had curbing been on there, father-in-law, whatever car I was driving, chances are I probably wouldn't wanna get the tire blown out. That would probably cost more than the ticket. Flip side, right before Christmas, my middle-aged student was at the high school for a, a band concert. My wife and I switched cars. She didn't tell me. She parked in the self-parking lot. I had a nice front-row parking in the high school main parking lot. That walk across that field in the muck at night in the wind was miserable. The twenty-five dollar ticket at that time sounded was worth it. It would've been worth it, because I walked across it and said, "This is ridiculous." But I did notice on the plans, and if, if my sight is right, I see a little walkway that almost looks like it's lighted of some sort. A walkway.
Lighted, ADA accessible.
That's something that I needed. As I was ready to step on that field to walk across to find out where she parked on that self-parking lot, two things hit me.
Did you consider the sidewalk or...
Well, no, well, being lazy, that is, at, at, at ten, whatever time it was, nine o'clock at night.
As the crow flies.
It was A to B, exactly. So I came out that sidewalk. Yeah, I could've gone down the sidewalk and, and walked around. You're absolutely a hundred percent right, but A to B, I wanna get a, I, I, you know, basically wanna get to my car and get home. So had there been curbs, the ticket, I probably wouldn't have got the ticket, because I wouldn't have gone up on the sidewalk. And just that thought of coming across, a nice little walkway, that side, that self-parking lot would be utilized. I think that's everybody's gripe. Where did you park? Main parking lot? And once you hear self-parking lot, it's, "Oh, good God."
They call it far.
Far.
Far parking lot. Distance, exactly what it is. So it, but not only that, it's, it's crossing over across a soggy, wet field to get to the parking lot. I grant, there was a sidewalk.
Sidewalk's a tough thing, too, so I couldn't really save you there.
All right, so anyhow, I'm actually here to defend. They do give out citations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Um, uh, two more comments on traffic and parking.
Hi, I'm Suki Berry, um, actually chairman of the Historic District Commission, but that's not what I, well, I will talk about that. But, um, the lighting, um, I'm worried about lighting being on. Will it be on all night? Will it go off at ten o'clock or eight-thirty?
It depends on what light, lights you're talking about.
Well, the field lights and...
Field lights will go, the, the times that we talked about earlier tonight about the lights going off refer to the big, uh, spotlights on the field.
Okay, and the, the path, that means new lights, right, on that little path?
I believe there are downward-facing kind of knee, knee height, no?
No, more like parking lot lights.
Parking lot lights.
And do they stay on all night?
No, no.
No, would they? Because, um, what the woman from Pleasant Street said that concerns me is that the lights attract the kids at night. And so, you know...
Yeah, so they won't stay on all night.
Okay.
I wish we could solve that parking lot problem.
Our department is very vigilant.
Anyway, um, I do think that we have an infrastructure problem. And I really am pleased with the way that you, um, conducted the hearing tonight, because it brought up some very significant details about the plan. And, um, I just wanna thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Yes, Mr. Kelly.
Dennis Kelly, sixty-three Pleasant Street. I, I just want to, uh, say that, uh, clearly granite curbing will make a difference. It will make a significant difference. Today, it is level, it is dirt. It looks like it is designed for you to pull your car right onto that dirt across from the field. So granite curb there is a huge difference, number one. Number two, uh, this fall, uh, I can, I'll reiterate what Warren said. There was a significant difference, uh, when there was an increase in education and an increase in presence at the soccer fields. And so, uh, I think we're just scratching the surface. There needs to be much more education in town about what the parking is at the high school, how it's supposed to work. And in particular, for people out of town that are coming in. Today, we have one sign, uh, I think it's at Main and Free, that's, points to Hingham High School. There's no signs to say where to park for different events. And so what happens is people are driving around the neighborhood all the time, and if you're in your front yard, they ask you, "Where's the high school? Where am I supposed to park?" And, and people have no idea. And so some basic education, basic signage, think of it as if you're a person from out of town trying to navigate, I think, would go a long way, and that, and the granite curbing and the additional sp... And the granite curbing and the additional spots are gonna make a huge difference.
Thank you. Thank you. So if you want to make the final comment of the evening, you are it.
Yeah, I worry about the curbing. When this property, two-two-three Central Street, when they renovated Town Hall, this building become Town Hall, they put curbing in the front here on Central Street. I live opposite the street. And people park there with that curbing to run across to the building when there's plenty of spaces here. And sometimes, getting out of my driveway, I have to be careful. So curbing is not gonna stop parking by any, and I agree with Peter about the scenic route. This still is historic Hingham. If we could save that, it would be wonderful. Another thing is, we have playing fields in the back of this building. And how many times I walk back there, and those playing fields are not being used. And I drive down Ward Street quite a bit to avoid Main Street. Very often, those fields over there are not being used. So maybe rescheduling some of these fields might help.
Thank you. It's almost ten-thirty, so we're not going to continue our comments tonight. I think we'll go with our plan, which is to spend our next hearing doing two things. One is getting a revised use policy from the school committee, which reflects our conversation tonight, which really outlines the hours that the lights will be on and the hours that the amplifier will be on, season by season. One thing we did not bring up tonight, but I did a little straw poll of my committee, is we didn't really talk about the summer. And it looks like the proposed use for the summer is kind of minimal. So without any conversation about it, I would just recommend that you not have lights and amplification in the summer. I don't think there's any amplification proposed. And the light proposed is for about an hour a night in August. It just doesn't seem, doesn't, for consistency purposes, I think it should just be no lights in the summer. And I think the people I sit with would agree with me, so I'm going out on the limit there. So next time, we'll go over that use policy with that kind of detail. And then we will start our deliberations on site plan review and go through our conditions of, which will reflect all the conversation about the granite curbing, about the parking, about the traffic flow, about everything except the drainage. And the only thing we'll be able to do with that is ask you to come back once you get your redesign through conservation, and then we would reopen that part of the...
Are we coming on that anyhow, Bill?
We're done.
Is it gonna alter the parking lot in any substantive way?
It will not alter the parking lot in any substantial way. It won't alter the parking lot at all from the plans that we have already refiled with you.
Okay.
The ones we have now.
The only question is, if you want to do this...
The only question is really the outfall of the under drainage of the proposed multipurpose turf field, and where we're tying that into flow offsite. That's the only residual issue.
Is it gonna cross Union Street still?
It's crossing Union Street today, and where we tie into it is a question, but yes, it will, at a lower rate and in a delayed fashion. Both of which are, we're gonna use the outfall that's existing, same pipe, at a lower rate later in the storm event.
Thank you. And thank you all for coming. Before we adjourn...
Next Monday.
Email you the what?
Next Monday.
Any conditions? Okay, so, conditions. If you have conditions, send them, Gary. If you have conditions and you would like to see, be part of the deliberations, send them to Mary, so she'll have the list of them. The second thing is, Baker Hill, do we have to do that tonight, or can we wait?
No, no.
Your meeting, your next meeting is next Monday at fourteen...
At seven o'clock.